Oh, yes. That was, that was part of it. But I didn't, that was when I asked. Yeah. I don't know. It's just, you know, it's part of the agenda. Together, we're so. I mean, you know. You asked. Well, I never listened to this. Are you, are you playing this play? No. All right. All right. You have a gun. No, you didn't do that. You had it on. Oh, I said. I mean, that's what's wrong. I'm like, what's your luck? Hi. I'm not. I'm just a little poor. Thank you. I'm waiting for you. No, that's what I collect from the two. You know, from one, until the end of the year. Yeah. Yes. No, no, don't. I always get way. Yep. All right. All right. Item two, for those that are following. I'm assuming their agenda. Yes. Okay. So, item two will be the civil reflections. What we're doing. Oh, first of all, let me introduce. Sorry. That was, that was my mess up before I start out. I want to introduce your new trustee, which is Cheryl Kellerman. And she's going to be taking Jason Almory's place on the board. Just so you know who she is. And you can tell, just saying in Jason's seat.
And you want to go by Sherry, right?
Yes. That's fine. I should have asked if there are any questions? I shouldn't. There is. I guess you're all set. No one has any questions, I guess. All right. So, all right. So, civil reflection, just so you know, item two, we do the pledge of allegiance, and then we do a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Don't you go anywhere. All right. The next thing we do, which is item three, is approve of the agenda. Is there any?
Yes. I'd like to add an election update under number fourteen, A and B.
Fourteen, C.
Did you see that?
It's an election update that I'd like to add, under number A, capital, under number fourteen, capital A, lower C.
It'll be your third page. Okay. What I'd like to see is the resignation for the public art committee, which is eleven D, as in David. I would like to move it, same place that our court did, so it actually will be D, under fourteen's new business. And again, that will be moved. Second page. Move it to the third page, under new business, fourteen. Now it'll be D, as you got seen. And, I think there's one more. Oh, I did want to mention the agenda. We were going to add it, but apparently it'd been taken care of. I put in for an update, the Park Lake Trail, with Ray Kopke. And, oh shoot, that's something that was going to be added to you. So, yep, that was missed. It was not put in the agenda. And apparently, Mr. Kopke had been contacted and said that it would be on the next meeting. So, I just wanted you to know, it wasn't in this packet. Should have been, but it wasn't.
I communicated with everyone.
That's what I figured you did. So, it was one of those things that, just so everybody knew.
I had to push six items because the agenda was full.
Yeah. Okay. Is that understood? Okay. Maybe that was the only other one I could add. I think that was the only one I could add. Okay. Does everybody understand the agenda?
So, I moved to approve the agenda with the two changes of moving eleven D to fourteen D, and adding fourteen C election update.
Second.
Mr. Fields Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chaloner, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any disclosure of conflict, which would be item four? None at this time? Okay. Then we go into public statements? There is none at this time? There you go. He knows it from heart. Item six would be your items for county, state, federal, and other agencies.
Good evening. Welcome, Ms. Kellerman. Congratulations. Major items at the county, we have completed the hire of the new county administrator, John Fuentes. I believe he was the administrator in county for, don't quote me in this, seventeen years, but he was there for a very long time. He's very familiar with the, you know, greater Lansing region, all the players and stakeholders. We feel this is going to be a very seamless transition. We're bringing him in about early to mid-January, so there'll be about a two-week overlap with Mr. Longmecker before he resigns or retires at the end of the month. We also interviewed in that process, you know, three other individuals. One of them was Dan Cos, the City of DeWitt administrator. If, for some reason, our negotiations failed with Mr. Fuentes, we were going to offer the position to Mr. Cos. Todd Campbell, our deputy administrator, gave a very solid interview, very impressive. I think Todd probably won the job the next time it comes up, you know, whenever Mr. Fuentes decides to move on. So, I think, you know, at that point, we should have a pretty seamless transition at the county, so we should be pretty, pretty rock solid up there for the management. County sheriff gave us an update. If I know the men in blue are back here, I might have asked them too, but I, you know, when the county sheriff is up there, just because he was there, and I know this, there's a lot of coordination, you know, for law enforcement, you know, I asked about the ongoing case regarding the murder of Mr. Yang. And, you know, while no murder should ever go unsolved, you know, I'm always thinking we should pay special interest to this case, because, you know, this, this gentleman, you know, was a veteran of the Indo-China wars, you know, he fought in Southeast Asia on behalf of American interests, and, you know, I really hope we get some closure for his family in the upcoming months or, or years, if it takes that long. On the parks front, we applied for two DNR grants to further develop the two parks, north of St. John's, Clinton Lakes on the west side of the road, Moats Park on the east side of the road. These are for universal access, more paving, more accessible playground structures on the Moats side. We'll see if we get those. We also decided to move forward to purchase the property in Pratt Road that will, it's an existing mining pit that will become the third county park, closer to the population centers down here in the southern part of the county, so we look forward to moving that ahead. The broadband initiative is still moving forward, you know, they have the first meeting of the task force, another one's coming up. We did learn some uncomfortable news from our consultant at Guide House, Adam Smitty, that the, apparently this was unknown until recently, that the government has given private business a veto power over this grant. We never knew this was available. So, for instance, WOW, which we have been in constant attempts to bring into this conversation, see where their services are, they, you know, didn't have, you know, any, any communication whatsoever. At some point, if we were successful in the grant, you know, an entity like WOW could come back and say, well, we have tangible plans to build out a certain area, maybe in Clark Road or something like that, and then they could actually nix part of our grant that we're using for that development area. Yeah, I know trustee Fields Bliss, it's concerning to me as well. So, hopefully this doesn't come to pass, but it's just definitely a wrinkle out there, and I think we would, we have a very solid plan on paper, it's very well thought of, the research, you know, I, I, I don't think we'd be able to get vetoed very easily, because we'd have to push back and say, well, you've been operating in this area for X number of years, please tell me how tangible this plan is and what your timeline is. So, I think we'd be able to override that if it came to it. But, you know, obviously, I want to, you know, thank the board again for, you know, hitching your efforts to our wagon. I know that you were, you know, out here front really early on the ARPA money, but, you know, you've decided to work in coordination with the county and the other townships, and I think that's, you know, going to pay off very soon. I just want to say, obviously, this will be my last report to this board, and actually, I walked in the room, and a couple people congratulated me, and they say, apparently, you don't go all the way down on the election results. But, yes, thank you, I will have time to golf on Monday nights going forward, I appreciate that. But, you know, I started here in this room eighteen years ago this week, you know, I was thirty years old, I had all the answers. I, I think Steve Wisswasser wanted to dropkick me across the county line, so I appreciate your patience, Steve, on that. But, you know, I was the, I was the youngest commissioner elected in Clinton County at thirty-four, and I'm forty-eight, and I'm still the youngest, and that's a real problem. I'm not saying anything, but that's a real problem. We need to be a little more representative of the county up there. But, if you, if anyone, if you know anyone with the first name of Stacy with an E, and they want to sign, let me know, I'm going to take them all and burn them in a big bonfire at my mom's farm next month, so just let me know if you want one, before that goes. So, just to make sure, no, I am not running again, I am burning all my material and moving on, and, you know, I, like I said, I've had a terrific eighteen-year, eighteen-year ride, you know, starting this township, I appreciated it, you know. You know, when I started, there were, this is not a partisan shot, it's just a reflection of the demographic change. This community is changing, and everything changes, and I'm glad that we're being responsive to that change, but, you know, when I started, there were seven Republicans who represented BAF on the township or county level. I'm the last man standing, so I, I don't feel like I lost, I feel like I've done a good job of serving, and I, you know, the demographics have just, you know, changed a little bit, and, you know, the community's got different representation, and that's perfectly fine, so. I want to thank you for allowing me to, you know, communicate to this board over the last fourteen years, and, you know, wish you luck in continuing some of those programs we've been working on, so, thanks. Any other questions, your comments?
Adam, I'd like to thank you for your time and your service. Obviously, I've been here for a while, so I know, but you've done a marvelous job of representing the county, our township, and you know as well, you and I have had this conversation, you know as well as others, that the money that runs this county, a big share of it comes from this township, and that's, that's a big deal. But, thank you for your service.
It's been a good, it's been good for my mental health, because my day job working in Lansing is I have to, you know, work for different lawmakers, a lot of people I don't actually agree with a lot of times, so it's, it was nice to have something of my own, to be elected official and represent my own values rather than the interests of my employer, so, yeah, I appreciate that.
You've always been available at county level, or even at your job downtown, that called, even if I've had issues with bills and things that I might have been more information on, and you were there, you were the guy. I appreciate you.
It is ironic, I'm leaving, and Dave Paul's eighty, and he's still staying up there.
A short, a short story.
I'm a little young to be retired here, but okay.
A short story for Dave Paul, the nineteen ninety-six, a lady by the name of Valveil Sharymaysoft got elected to this board here, and, and we went to our first meeting, we, they didn't have a township board meeting, we went to our first meeting, which was at the county elected officials meeting, and we thought we was pretty special, being thirty-some odd years old and being elected, and we went, we sat right in the front row, folks, and Dave Paul stood up in the back, and it was after they got done with the agenda and calling the meeting in order, he warned everybody to look out, because the young ones was coming. I think we looked at each other as though he was talking about us. Ironically, we're both still elected people, I guess she isn't yet, but she will be soon. The county commissioner term ends in January?
December thirty-first, and, like I said, this will be the last time county commissioners serve two years. Two years, in twenty twenty-four, they will be elected to four-year terms.
Incidentally, I don't know about the age of Dave was, so.
Yeah. Young chick.
Thank you, Adam.
Okay. I would, do know the same kind of thing. You and I have known each other for a long time. I won't say hundred years, but it's a long time, and I know you're going to thoroughly enjoy it, and I'm really envious of it, so you are going to have a great time. You really are. It'll take you all of thirty seconds, you know, minutes gone, you'll burn, and everything will be okay.
Yeah, still got locked, I still got locked down a job, you know, for the big transition in Lansing, so that's my fault, a hundred percent of my income is dependent on the orders. That's, that's purely my duty, so I'm okay with that.
Adam, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anna.
Yeah, that's a hard one to follow. All right, item seven is your consent agenda, and what that consists of is, as you can see, from what our board can see, there's a lot of, you can see, following on the agenda, there's a lot of minutes, and they do that in one group for time, as opposed to going to each one. So, do you have a motion to consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the entire consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chaloner, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fields Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
And item nine, which is approval of vouchers?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers, as submitted.
Second.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fields Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
And of course, takes us to page two, there was a lot in the consent agenda. We have approval of minutes for the board of trustees, and that is item eight, A and B.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the board of trustee work session meeting of October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the regular board of trustee meeting on October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, as presented.
Second.
Ms. Butler Chaloner, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fields Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
And item nine, which is approval of vouchers?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers, as submitted.
Second.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fields Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chaloner, yes.
And item ten, which is the treasurer's report, since no attachment, but.
There is no attachment.
I know, there is.
Didn't get it before the board meeting. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, it was brought to my attention several weeks ago, Supervisor Howe mentioned.
How did you get that one?
Yeah, I did. Took and talked about fund balances, and we've been dealing with the, with the budget, and, I think I'll do and put together a paper, but I do have a paper that has supporting documentation. I give you all a copy of this tonight, and the first page is, is, that gives you what the fund balances and the beginning balances would have been after the adjustment of the financial statements as of Aug., of January first, excuse me. The second one would be the deposits or, or money that was taken in during the time of January first through today. The third one would be your liabilities, the third column says whole credit, that'd be your liabilities, and that would be what was spent out of them funds, and them fund balances. Incidentally, I'll start over, but that'll be a part of the second page, but over on the left, you'll see a fund and a fund number, it starts with one oh one and ends with eight sixty-one. Obviously, one oh one is the general fund. There's actually several funds here that are part of what they call the pool fund account, that's the general fund account, and then it goes right on down through, some of these accounts have their separate accounts, and what that means is they basically have a separate bank account, and you'll get to that in a minute here. It ends down at the bottom, eight sixty-one, that's our street life fund. The ending balance is pretty close to what it is today, tonight, right here, as of the, I counted one as of the thirtieth, which is obviously not the thirtieth, but you got about three million, four hundred forty-three thousand, thirty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents, we spent some fund balance this year. Then in the second page, you go to that, and I thought this is a good page, since we have a new board member, and I'm not picking up a new board member, but I figured that maybe everybody here could do the represser. This actually gives you your funds, and it starts with one oh one down to eight sixty-one, and tells you which ones are governmental funds, which ones are proprietary funds, which ones fiduciary funds, special revenue funds, capital projects, custodial funds, like the seven oh one fund is a trust and agency fund where that money's held in escrows for different projects we have, that goes on in the township. Obviously, the seven oh three fund is a, is a trust and agency fund as well, but that is a tax fund. The unique thing about the tax fund is it never has fund balance. If it has a fund balance, you got bad treasure. But that, that's, that's what that is there, and of course, payroll's the same thing, it's money in and money out. The third page of this thing will give you another little idea about this, and I wrote back to the numbers, out of the bank account numbers, and not that I don't trust you, but I just don't really think I want them out there. It lists you, you have the banks you have, you have a total of eight different bank accounts that you maintain here. Anywhere's some general checking, sewer, current tax, trust and agency, water fund, building authority debt, which there is none currently, DEA, and ARPA fund, which is our American Rescue Fund. And that pretty well sums up what your, your fund balances are, and I do have supporting documentation for this, and it would take a little longer, what these folks, people will listen to tonight, to explain that, if you have any questions deeper, and I'm more than happy to explain that, if you folks want to get to that point. Second thing I have is I'll give you an update on taxes, we've been working hard between the assessing office and the treasurer's office the last couple weeks here, we've had lots of things and changes we've had to make, because our community is growing, there's lots of things going on. I'm going to give you a little rundown. Summer taxes, we were charged with collecting ten million, eight hundred ten thousand, one seventy-eight forty. As of tonight, we, we've collected all but two hundred and seventy-five thousand of that, or two hundred and seventy-five thousand delinquent. Obviously, the taxes are, are due on September fourteenth. We typically carry about four hundred thousand dollars in summer taxes into the winter, so we're ahead of the game this year for that. I don't know why, I can't tell you why that is, I just, I don't, I'm not an economist, I just watch someone come in the door to collect it and try to do the right stuff with it. The winter tax rule, we've got that all put together this week, and just today, I just finished it, I committed today. When you commit the tax rule, that means that you're, there's no going back, you're good to go. We had a few things we had to work out, two things, little changes here and there, we got some land, land bank properties with special assessments, which you can't have, we had to deal with that, but different. This year, with the principal residence exemption, the legislature, our funds with Adam down there, our friends down there, the legislature, they took and passed a law taking and changing the P R E rule, where you can have a P R E and be granted by the local assessor at any time of the year. That makes it tough, because you got, you got a moving target all the time, and you're balancing every day when you're, when you're doing this, but it changes the, the dollar amount of your target number, what you're supposed to be. So, we have to watch that, we disperse, because we disperse every fifteen days, and we can be off, and it can throw us all out of balance, and when the county treasurer gets out of balance, she's usually not as friendly to work with, but she is the rest of the time. She, she's, she's a great person, though. The DNR, just to give you a little clue here, we have three tax rolls in the winter here, we have a DNR tax roll for forty-seven thousand, three seventy-eight sixty-three to collect this year. We have an I F T. You'll say, what's an I F T? That's part of the Michigan business tax, part of it, and as industrial facilities, facilities tax, we have forty-two hundred and thirty-one dollars there. Then you have your add valorem, which is what most of us here have in our homes and whatnot. We have eleven billion, four hundred eighty-nine five forty to collect here this winter for that. All that said, at the end of the day, we've had a pretty good tax season thus far, and then going forward, I think we're going to be pretty good shape going forward. If anybody has any more questions about what I've been doing the last couple weeks, that's what I've been doing. And ironically, I'm able to do some of this when I'm not even here, so I'm, I'm pretty talented, yes.
I have a question, not about what you've been doing, because I know you're working hard. Can you help me understand why the general fund is three hundred five in the negative at the beginning of the year?
That's because of the way the split financial statements read, it's, it's probably the way that they stated it on, on the paperwork. If you look in our audit, which is where you need to look, and that's why I said if you want to dig into it deeper, I can show you the actual fund balance sheet in the paper, but that's, it's just the way it's stated there, that means nothing. All that is, is it's a number, is what it was. Because if you go down in the, in the paper, and you look at it, it changes again, in the next line, on the actual fund balance sheet, but there is twenty, there, there's twenty changing things here, I mean, so I gotta think about what I'm doing here, but there's twenty-eight different funds in this thing. And, and some of that, all that twenty-eight different funds, if you look at your governmental funds, if you look over here on the, on the second page, that's part of your pool fund account, and so it gets split out, and you have, and you have a fund, a pool fund account which has all them different funds in there, and that money, in other words, you have one bank account that has all them funds in it, and that's, that's why, and then you have to go back in, you have to add that all up and add them together, and it's really not negative when you do that.
Okay, thank you.
It's just the way it's stated on paper. All pool fund accounts are that way, all municipalities have them, the counties have them, cities have them, it's a good way of doing business. Some places don't run everything through their, through their one account. Some places run everything through their general account, and they rely on journal entries to take and separate everything out. That gets a lot more busier, you have to have a lot more accounting staff to do that. We don't do that here. We have, we have issues here, we had to watch, like the police department had, had a question, and I've got that question answered last week, when we had our year, half year, I guess a year end review, start of it, they'll be back on the ninth of December, but we had a question of communications line item that was off, and what happens on a lot of this stuff, like our liability insurance and everything like that is paid in July. Problem with that is, it's a half-year thing, but it's for a whole year, so what we have to do, we have to prorate it, have to change it. The same thing happens with the police department, with some of their subscriptions, with the nine-one-one system and all that, has to be prorated, we have to take and adjust it, wherever that happens. That's what, when they come in to do the financial statements, that's what the main district does, they go, they take that, they prorate that number out and divide it out, and decide what percentage of that is for the year two thousand twenty-two, what percentage of that's going to be for the year two thousand twenty-three, or if in some cases, it might be backwards into twenty-one. So, it's, that, there is a moving target as well.
I promise you a good query. You can not leave without one of those, but I need to come into the office and talk to you. Where does the money from fund balance come from?
Taxes. Where all the money comes from.
Well, no, I understand that, but I'm asking the fund balance, where you have some leftover.
It's leftover money you have from, from every year, and we had this conversation, and I think we're going to talk about it later tonight, but I'm not sure, but the, the fund balance is set up so it's, it's, it's designed to be used for current year budget amendments. It's not designed to take and be used for the next year's budget unless it's restricted or reserved, and then it can't be. But in our case, the unreserved part is where we take and make a, where we take and make a budget amendment, I don't know if we do a budget amendment around here, that is done by, by the current year tax amendments that we make, and that's, that's what it's taking, that's where that money comes from. Now, what that can do is, when you get done after the financial statements get done, this year it didn't happen, because we didn't have to, but it probably will before we're done, you can take the current year fund balance after you're all done with finance, after the financial statements are drafted, and you can use that to reduce the amount of general fund commitment to the other funds that need it. For instance, the public safety fund, the public safety fund, the two oh five needs, it needs, typically, we move about seven to eight hundred thousand dollars, I think Fisher Keenan, they said he was going to move a million, but I think it's more like seven, seven fifty, eight hundred thousand, and you can actually use that money in, in the public safety fund to take and lessen the impact on the general fund if you want to. That is what the original use of, of that is for going forward, but you can't do that until after you have your financial statements implemented, after you get your audit, because that, you don't know what it is. Because they're going to go in there, and they're going to do all prorating, they're going to do everything, it needs to be done, that, in a way of moving money around to take a cover, what needs to be done in the way of some of these half-year expenses that overlap to go into another year, and you won't know what that
Obviously not the 30th, but you got about 3,443,035 and 79 cents. We spent some fund balance this year. Um, then the second page, you go to that, and I thought this is a good page since we have a new board member, and I'm not picking on a new board member, but I figured that maybe everybody here could do the pressure. This actually gives you your funds in the chart from 101 down to 861. It tells you which ones are governmental funds, which ones are proprietary funds, which ones fiduciary funds, uh, special revenue funds, capital projects, uh, custodial funds, like the 701 fund is a trust and agency fund where that money's held in escrows for different projects we have that goes on in the township. Obviously, the 703 fund is a, is a trust and agency fund as well, but that is a tax fund. Um, the unique thing about the tax fund is it never has fund balance. If it has a fund balance, you got bad treasure. Um, but that, that's, that's, uh, what that is there. And of course payroll is the same thing. It's money in and money out. The third page of this thing will give you another little idea about this, and I redacted the numbers out of the bank account numbers. And I don't trust you, but I just don't really think I want them out there. Um, it lists you, you have the banks you have. You have a total of eight different bank accounts that you maintain here. Um, anywhere from general checking, sewer, current tax, trust and agency, water fund, building authority debt, which there is none currently, DEA and, uh, ARCA fund, which is our American Rescue Fund. And that pretty well sums up what your, your, uh, fund balances are. And I do have supporting documentation for this, and it would take a little longer what these folks, people will listen to tonight to explain that if you have any questions deeper, and I'm more than happy to explain that, um, if you folks want to get to that point. Second thing I have is I'll give you an update on taxes. We've been working hard between the assessing office and the treasurer's office the last couple of weeks here. We've had lots of things and changes we had to make because our community is growing. There's lots of things going on. I'm gonna give you a little rundown. Uh, summer taxes, we were charged with collecting $10,810,178.40. As of tonight, um, we, we, we've collected, um, all but 275,000 of that, or 275,000 delinquent. Obviously, the taxes are, are due on, uh, September 14th. We typically carry about $400,000 in summer taxes into the winter. So we're ahead of the game this year for that. I don't know why. I can't tell you why that is. I just, I don't, I'm not an economist. I just did watch someone come in the door to collect it and try to do the right stuff with it. Um, the winter tax rule, we've got that all put together this week, and just today, I just finished it. I committed today. When you commit to tax rule, that means that you're, there's no going back. You're good to go. We had a few things we had to work out, two things, little changes here and there. We got some, uh, land, land bank properties with special assessments, which you can't have. We had to deal with that, but different. This year with the principal residence exemption, the legislature, our funds with Adam down there, our friends down there, the legislature, they took and passed a law taking and changing the P R E rule where you can have a P R E and be granted by the local assessor at any time of the year. That makes it tough because you got, you got a moving target all the time, and you're balancing every day when you're, when you're doing this, but it changes the, the, the dollar amount of your target number, what you're supposed to be. So we have to watch that. We disperse, because we disperse every 15 days, and we can be off, and it can throw us all out of balance. And when the county treasurer gets out of balance, she's usually not as friendly to work with, but she is the rest of the time. Um, she, she, she's a great person, though. The D N R, uh, just to give you a little clue here, we have three tax rolls in the winter here. We have a D N R tax roll for $47,378.63 to collect this year. We have an I F T. You'll say, what's an I F T? That's part of the Michigan business tax, um, part of it. And that's, uh, industrial facilities, facilities tax. We have $4,231 there. Then you have your add valorem, which is what most of us here have in our homes and whatnot. Uh, we have $11,489.40 to collect here this winter for that. Um, all that said, at the end of the day, we've had a pretty good tax season thus far, and then going forward, I think we're gonna be pretty good shape going forward. Um, if anybody has any more questions about what I've been doing the last couple of weeks, that's what I've been doing. And ironically, I'm able to do some of this when I'm not even here, so I'm, I'm pretty talented at it. Yes.
Uh, I have a question, not about what you've been doing, because I know you're working hard. Uh, can you help me understand why the general fund is 305 in the negative at the beginning of the year?
That's because of the way the split financial statements read. It's, it's probably the way that they stated it on, on the paperwork. If you look in our audit, which is where you need to look, and that's why I said if you want to dig into it deeper, I can show you the actual fund balance sheet in the paper. But that's, it's just the way it's stated there. That means nothing. All that is, is it's a number, is what it was. Because if you go down in the, in the paper and you look at it, it changes again in the next line on the actual fund balance sheet. But there is 20, there, there, there's, uh, 20 changing things here. I mean, so I gotta think about what I'm doing here. But there's 28 different funds in this thing. And, and some of that, of all that 28 different funds, if you look at your governmental funds, if you look over here on the, on the second page, that's part of your pool fund account. And so it gets split out, and you have, and you have a fund, a pool fund account which has all them different funds in there. And that money, in other words, you have one bank account that has all them funds in it, and that's, that's why. And then you have to go back in, you have to add that all up and add them together, and it's really not negative when you do that.
Okay, thank you.
It's just the way it's stated on paper. All pool fund accounts are that way. All municipalities have them, the counties have them, cities have them. Uh, it's a good way of doing business. Some places don't run everything through their, through their one account. Some places run everything through their general account, and they rely on journal entries that they can separate everything out. That gets a lot more busier. You have to have a lot more accounting staff to do that. Uh, we don't do that here. We have, we have issues here that we had to watch, like the police department had, had a, had a question, and I've got that question answered last week when we had our year, half year, I guess a year end review, start of it. They'll be back on the 9th of December, but we had a question of the communications line item that was off. And what happens on a lot of this stuff, like our liability insurance and everything like that is paid in July. Problem with that is, it's a half year thing, but it's for a whole year. So what we have to do, we have to prorate it, have to change it. The same thing happens with the police department with some of their subscriptions with the 911 system and all that. Has to be prorated. We have to take it and adjust it wherever that happens. That's what, when they come in to do the financial statements, that's what the, uh, Maynard Bisterston does. They go, they take that and they prorate that number out and divide it out and decide what percentage of that is for the year 2022, what percentage of that's gonna be for the year 2023, or if in some cases it might be backwards in the 21st. Um, so it's, that, there is a moving target as well.
My problem is a big question. You can not hear, I'm one of those people who come into the office to talk to you. Where does the money from fund balance come from?
Taxes. Where all the money comes from.
Well, no, I understand that, but I'm asking the fund balance where you have some leftover.
It's leftover money you have from, from every year. And we had this conversation, and I think we're gonna talk about it later tonight, but I'm not sure. But the, the fund balance is set up so it's, um, it's, it's designed to be used for current year budget amendments. It's not designed to take and be used for the next year's, um, um, budget unless it's restricted or reserved, and then it can't be. But in our case, the unreserved part is where we take and make a, where we take and make a budget amendment, I don't know if we do a budget amendment around here. That is done, um, by, by the current year, um, tax amendments that we make, and that's, that's what it's taking, that's where that money comes from. Now, what that can do is when you get done after the financial statements get done, um, this year it didn't happen because we didn't have to, but it probably will before we're done. Um, you can take the current year fund balance after you're all done with finance, after the financial statements are drafted, and you can use that to reduce the amount of general fund, um, commitment to the other funds that need it. For instance, the public safety fund. The public safety fund, the 205 needs, it needs, typically, we move about $700,000 to $800,000. I think Fisher Keenan, they said he was gonna move a million, but I think it's more like 700,000, 750,000, 800,000. And you can actually use that money in, in the public safety fund to take and, and lessen the impact on the general fund if you want to. That is what the original use of, of, of that is for going forward, but you can't do that until after you have your financial statements amended, after you get your audit, because that, you don't know what it is. Because they're gonna go in there and they're gonna do all prorating, they're gonna do everything that needs to be done, that, in a way of moving money around to take in cover what needs to be done in the way of some of these half year expenses that overlap that go into another year, and you won't know what that fund balance is. Not even I will know that. I have an idea, but I won't know it until you get to the, to the very end. And that's why you gotta be real careful about that, because you gotta be legal about that. You can't, you have to take in, in, uh, budget for your expenses, you have to budget for your, for your expenses.
So it's leftover dollars?
Sometimes, sometimes.
Right, okay, thank you. You don't wanna go into the office.
Anybody's welcome to come in, you can look at this. I doubt, I've got a good documentation page here for each fund. Um, we can, we can go over it if you want to talk about it. It's not rocket science.
Sometimes it is, though. Look, thank you, greatly appreciate it. I shouldn't ask that, but I'm going to. Is there any questions? Turn the pages, because that's, we'll be going into that later. Okay.
I would ask one. Can, can we have a copy of that same?
What, this paper is a handout, yes?
Thank you.
Anybody else want copies? Just two copies.
I have two copies. I need to get that copy. Yeah, I got two articles right here.
Nope, that's good. All right, item 11, which has to do with the reappointments. And apparently, that is mine, which has to do for appointments of the board trustees. In fact, we have a change, which we did midterm, so to speak. There's an adjustment with committees that many of our trustees are assigned to. Trustee Kellerman will be taking, trustee Almory, gee, I had to stop and think for a minute. Committees that he has accept, there is one exception in there, and that exception is the senior services advisor, which trustee Rosecrance have. He now is going to have police and fire. So what trustee Kellerman's going to have is your zoning board, your senior services, and your public art, which we will be talking later on about that, those three. What trustee Rosecrance will have, he will then have the police and fire as opposed to the senior services. So that's basically the appointments. Any questions? Okay, reappointments, that's also mine, has to do with the Park Lake Advisory Board, and that's Donald Parky. Excuse me?
Are we gonna vote?
You wanna vote, you can vote.
You have to vote.
Okay. Let the little poll vote.
You gotta have a motion and amendment, second.
That's what I'm... So is it a three minute or not?
I move that we add trustee Kellerman to the zoning board of appeals, senior services advisory board, and the public art advisory committee, and add trustee Rosecrance to police and fire advisory committee, dropping Al from senior services. Is that right, Al?
And I could talk to him about it, so he's very loyal.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Mr. Fions Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrance?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Kalender, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's appreciated. Now we'll go into the reappointments. This I do know that we're gonna have to go down. This is, I'm asking that Donald Parky be reappointed to the Park Lake Advisory. You wanna do these together, or, there are two. Or you wanna do one at a time?
Might as well do them together.
Okay. The second one is this Kimberly Fout, who is with the senior services advisory board, and she has requested that she be reappointed. These appointments will end December 31 of 2025, so they're three year terms.
I'll move the reappoints.
I'll second it.
Mr. Fions Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrance?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Kalender, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll be on 11C, which is a resignation, which is the first one's I have, uh, from Ms. Kathy Ulrich from the senior services advisory. And you have a copy of the letter. And are you willing to accept her resignation?
And will we accept her resignation?
Mr. Rosecrance?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Kalender, yes?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fions Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with your, yes, you did take D and move it, so that will change the agenda. Um, next we have the township committee reports, and then normally that would have been added to that besides Judy. Thank you ever so much for doing that, keeping us updated on what's going on. We have added Park Lake Trail, but that will come next, yeah, December 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. Judy Gardi, Park Lake Road. I chair the senior services advisory committee. I guess it's the senior services advisory board. I just want to update you, um, on the progress that we've been making for, um, the discussion regarding the expansion of the senior center. Um, the last time you met, we recommended that Doak Los be brought in as our facilitator, um, based on an interview that we had with him, Karen and I, and Kim. Um, his proposal is for $3,200. You asked for a resume, it's in your packet tonight. You'll find that he's very experienced in, um, group facilitation. Uh, he's trained in that, uh, like, in that area of work. He, he's done several publications related to community facilit, I mean, yeah, community facilitation, and, um, I think that you'll find him to be engaging, uh, and, uh, very passionate, and he is highly qualified. We also, um, sent out, uh, requests for proposals for, to five architectural firms so we could bring an architect, um, on, into the project. We reached out to the architect who designed the kitchen for us at the senior center because we thought he had the experience with the building and was familiar with the building. Um, he did present a proposal to us, uh, we were glad to see that. Um, we reached out to him for an interview. Um, we also reached out to another architect that had responded to our request for proposals. Um, the architect from the senior center originally passed away about two weeks ago. We interviewed Matt Morgan. He's, uh, actually an architectural designer. He works with a team. He, um, has given us a proposal. Uh, he will stay with us, um, provide us with drawings, permit, uh, applications, renderings, plan reviews. He'll be a part of the conversation. He's very professional. We've checked his references. Um, his proposal is for $4,500. We've also developed an outreach plan, which is in your packet tonight. His resume is in your packet, the architect's resume is in your packet as well. We have developed an outreach plan, which is in your packet tonight. Uh, I know you have a full agenda, so I won't go into all the details, but I would encourage you to look over the outreach plan that we have provided you with. We have a draft invitation. We have some, uh, draft questions that would be done in a monkey type survey. We will be reaching out to these individual partners. Um, we will make personal phone calls as we reach out to people within the community to come to the table and have a conversation with us. So we encourage you to, um, be a part of the process and help us move this forward, and, uh, if you think of anybody that's not on that list that we ought to invite, please let us know. Thank you. If you have any questions? Marie?
Yep, I do. My only question is initially, when we talked about that you wanted $5,000, and Jason was the one who, trustee Almory, gee, who said 20,000 would be better for the parking and for the personnel. When I went back and reviewed it, I was wrong, wrong from the standpoint that it taught me a lesson on exactly how amendments or proposals, how, how we term them, and how we say them. And it talked about this expansion. I'm afraid for me, I understood it to be parking lot and for facilitating the community. But apparently, what we voted on dealt with this expansion. Does that make sense?
Yes, what, what we had asked for was $5,000 to, uh, bring an architectural engineer in to look at the expansion of the building. Um, and in talking with that, with the board that night, we discussed the fact that perhaps we should not only be talking about the physical building, but we should also be talking about the programs and the services, um, that we provide, uh, at the facility, um, and whether or not the community sees that in the future, we should look at not only expanding the physical building, but also the scope of the services that we provide, which in Jason, in, in talking about this, suggested that recreation should be a big part of the, or a part of the conversation, looking at programs that we could provide within the township for our older Americans, um, as, as we have this conversation about the expansion of the senior set, center. So that's why he increased the amount of money from the $5,000 to the 20,000, so we could have a more engaging conversation.
So there was no discussion on the parking lot?
No. The parking issue will be a, will be, become a part of the discussion, uh, when we talk about expanding the building, and it'll be a role that the architect plays with us in looking at the site plan and evaluating if we can expand the building based on parking and at that location, where might we find additional parking at that location? How what, how might we accomplish that? Um, so that is why it's important to have a, a professional at the table who can help us deal with that issue.
So if in fact the architect determines that the building is too small, you will be looking in the future for another location?
Well, I can't, I can't say how the conversation would turn out, or exactly what the recommendation might be, but just suppose, right? Um, that we have a conversation that says the senior center is perfect the, the way it is. It's homey and comfortable, and people love to come there, and that's, you know, really a, you know, what's so special about it, and, but we have to begin to look at how we can provide additional services, and maybe, I mean, I'm just dreaming, but maybe we, we, we see that recreation can be key into having us bring more older people into programs and services that we provide, and maybe we look at the Bath Community Center as a place that we develop for recreational programs, and we look at the senior center and we say, okay, if it were just a little bit bigger and we could bump it out just a little bit, maybe we would make the, the, the porch that we have out there, the patio, the porch, into a three season room or a four season room, and, and that would be the only space that we would add. And then we focus our, our efforts and our time on looking at the redesign of the community center with a better kitchen and better facilities for a bunch of larger recreation programs. So I can't answer the way the conversation will go, but I'll just say that there are lots of possibilities out there, and that it'll be good and enriching to have a broader conversation to look at the possibilities.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm sorry, I stepped out to use the restroom, so I apologize if I missed something. I thought we were hiring a facilitator to facilitate a conversation before we got anywhere near the hiring of an architect. Have I, did I miss that timing?
We want, we feel it's important that the architect be at the table and participate in the conversation and listen to what people have to say, so that as we look forward at designing space, the space that we design meet the needs that are articulated by the community. So we've asked for an architect to come in at the beginning of the process. He's not charging us for that time, but he is willing to participate in the two conversations that we have, the dialogues that we have.
Okay, thank you.
We'll have two community conversations, one in the afternoon for those people who don't travel in the evening, and one in the evening for those people who are working.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Marie?
I'm sorry.
I would like this to be put on our next meeting's, uh, agenda for these two people.
Um, it's later on in the agenda for action?
Oh, is it already in there? All right. I'd also like to say that we had 150 people that they fed Thanksgiving, and, um, it's
All right, you started with for action? All I've got, okay, maybe it's just one more minute. It was under the township committee reports 12.
It's also on under unfinished business items for action?
Page, oh, unfinished business.
I.
That was the.
Page three? Just before new business? Proposals for expansion and improvement of the Bath Township Senior Center.
Is that before? All right, again, okay. Resolutions, like that. Fourth quarter, fourth quarter, oh, I got you. And you're putting that one under. Items, got you. All right, any other questions? Thank you, Judy.
Pleasure.
Appreciate it. Um, unfinished business items for introduction, doesn't seem to be any items for action. You guys have been so patient. This is Police Chief Lindemulder's retirement notice, and that would be A.
Thank you. Um, when I received this from Chief Lindemulder, um, I, I have to say that working with this man, um, has been a pleasure, and I felt that it was important that he come here and share this with the board. Um, I've asked him here tonight if he'd like to say a few words about his retirement. He is, he's smiling at me, um, but I, I felt that this letter needed to be shared with this board and with this community. He's meant a great deal to me and our professional relationship and the management of the police department of Bath Township, and I wanted him to be able to share what it's meant for him to be our chief.
I just want the opportunity to thank, you know, the community, mostly, you know, all of you, um, thanks for supporting our, our department. Um, it's, it's with heavy heart that I'm leaving, trust me. But it's time, 33 years in, and, uh, it's been a great run. It's, you know, I started here very young, and, uh, I get to go very young, so I appreciate everything, I appreciate the community, so thank you, and I hope you accept the resi- the retirement. If you have any questions, I could take that, so.
We're pretty well accepted.
I don't know, I don't know what happens there. On the 29th, I may be going.
Vacation time. All right, items for action. We need a motion?
This is my plan all along.
I reluctantly move to accept Police Chief Lindemulder's retirement notice as presented to us tonight.
Ms. Howe?
Okay.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fions Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrance?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Kalender, yes?
All right, we have unfinished business 13B, which is the employment agreement.
Thank you. On the flip side of, uh, heavy heart and accepting, uh, Police Chief Lindemulder's retirement On the flip side of heavy heart and accepting Police Chief Linda Mulder's retirement notice, Lieutenant Mary Smith and I have embarked on a new relationship as counterparts and I have brought to you tonight for your, I hope your approval of his contract to become interim Police Chief of Bath Township.
One question, you know, you already knows what this is. An interim for six months means that obviously you're going to be attempting to prove that this is okay. I'm having serious thoughts with this $102,000 for an interim. I understand after the fact if that's the hiring process that we go through, but the interim I'm having difficulty with. So I may ask that that be taken back to his original salary that he has. I understand what you said here with contract and et cetera. But $102,000 for the interim, does that leave after the six months, there's a 3% increase or a 4% or is that continued through his time?
It would be continued through the first year of the contract.
Is this the amount that we would have been paying the current chief had he stayed?
Current. But that's not an interim.
Well, he's doing the job of the chief. He should be compensated for doing the job of the chief.
Does that mean in six months he gets to be chief?
No, it doesn't. It means he's doing a job for six months and deserves the compensation for doing the job.
Sorry, Derek. Wonderful to agree, disagree, only one vote, but okay. So that item for action is the employment agreement.
Move approval of the interim Police Chief employment agreement as presented tonight.
Sergeant?
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Strickland-Bless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Futterchandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
No. Okay. All right, on page three. You're always so patient. All right, item for action B, which would be C. Thank you all for coming. Take your time, guys.
Suddenly feel less protected.
We're far away.
C S H O, resolution approval of the capital project contract.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Kind of coming full circle with this SRF project. Things are coming together rather quickly and this is just one of the items that need to be taken care of. Previously, I've discussed that part of the requirements to enter into the SRF program is to ensure there's protections for every, all parties involved. That includes Bath Township and the other municipalities that are involved with SCUMA and SCUMA as an authority itself. So these contracts are put in place to ultimately secure everybody's interest in case, so when the project actually moves forward, if it moves forward, everybody has the burden and everything spared, is spelled out appropriately and equally so everybody understands their position and their, and their longstanding liabilities. So the contract you have in front of you is the same one all other four municipalities have. Two have passed it, you will be the third one to see it tonight. Hopefully you can find a reason to pass it as presented and then we'll have one final one to finish up in December. Once these contracts are in place, we're looking to move forward with bidding. Actually, we'll be looking to approve the bidding process at our next SCUMA board meeting in December, at which time we'll put the, put the plan out for bid. And about five weeks later, we'll open those bids and that's when we'll have some decisions to make. All this is in lieu of, in hopes, I'm sorry, in hopes of the project falling within the project estimates, which you see here on the memo at the $16.7 million. It's a crazy bidding environment out there right now. I have no idea how that's going to look, but we have to have all these things in place even to get into that process per SRF requirements. If the bids come in exponentially over our plan, you know, we absolutely can pull out and recalibrate and have a different plan moving forward. We've had some of those discussions at the SCUMA level and set kind of some tiered approach to evaluating them bids if they do come in over. I'm still fairly confident that, and I say that hesitantly, that we should be in good shape based on the latest numbers, so. That's what we have for you here tonight.
Is there a threshold of bidding above what you expect that you would have to bring it back or is it any change from the expectation you'd have to bring it back to us?
The plan would be, depending on how it be funded, the original expectations, it base, was based on the original $16.7, not including the 10% principal forgiveness. So really we get to the 18.3 with no impact anybody originally planned, so that, that one I don't see coming back. Anything above that I do because it will have some impact. And the potential options range from asking SRF for additional monies. That has been allowed in the past. I doubt that's going to be allowed now because they actually spent all the money they've had for the first time in, I think, ever, based on project needs. The other options are pay for it with some reserves at the SCUMA level and/or input from the other community, the customer communities.
If the estimate or bid comes back higher, are we capped at this 1.67 million for the 10% or does that also increase?
No, it is capped based on the original project estimate. That was legislatively bound through their arca monies.
Smart on their part, bummer for us.
That was one line, the second one, when you talk about your bids, are they sealed?
Yep.
And then you'll open them?
Yep.
Okay, that's the one.
They will be sealed bids. They're pre-qualified bidders.
Yeah.
A motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt the capital projects resolution.
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Strickland-Bless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Futterchandler, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, apparently we are at, this is 13D, for those who are following, this is a negotiation of the superintendent's contract. It doesn't seem to be. Okay. Let me try to get this up.
Thank you, there is no attachment.
Okay.
What I'm here for to ask tonight is for this board to choose member or members that would engage in contract negotiation with me for another contract so that that action can take place before the end of the year.
Please do that. You, you are on it?
We did the review, we didn't do the contract negotiation, we did her earlier.
Because I haven't seen a review, so I don't know. Is that completed?
Yes.
Okay. Has that been handed out? Because I didn't get one if it was, no.
No, it's my personal thing.
So we don't see the review?
You can request it.
Oh, I thought it wasn't. I'm requesting it.
You'll have to request it anyway.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate that, just so I understand where I'm standing on this. Okay. In writing. Yes, trusted, here we list.
I would move that we appoint Clerk Chaloner as the primary negotiator since we have assigned Karen's contract to her.
Also, I'd like a friendly motion.
We'll see.
I'd like to add, you and Alan to that group, the three of us to sit down and go over that contract if you find that acceptable.
Interesting, you just shot across the table at us.
Try that one more time.
I would like to add Ryan and Alan to that group of board members to review the contract.
Are you open to that?
Group you would.
All right, we've, we've discussed, we'll allow that friendly amendment. You support the amendments too?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Strickland-Bless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Futterchandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Make sure I'm understanding, you have three people that are going to do the negotiating. And then what happens with the negotiation? Does that come back for acceptance? Is that what you're looking? Okay. Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would I request that writing, is that to you or is that to the board?
You could put that, actually you could send that to the clerk to apply.
Oh, it's a void request? Okay. Nope, I got you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It looks like we are at our public hearing, which would be the E, public hearing. Somebody going to make a motion? Can we go into a public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we go into a public hearing for the 2023 budget.
I'll support it. Ms. Kellerman? Mr. Strickland-Bless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Futterchandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're officially into a public hearing, so all of you are invited to discuss. Don't worry. Where's your paper, Don? You're supposed to have. All good, man. All right, now how do we, how do we want to start this? Do we start with you explaining the budget? Is that because there may be those who don't know?
I can.
Okay. Start that way, that way that'll bring everybody up to speed.
Okay. So the, the budget hearing tonight will be on the budget for 2023, which begins January 1st of 2023 and runs obviously through the end of the year, December 31st, 2023. What we have here in front of you, in front of the board members tonight, a packet of the little book that come if any of you would like to see it, is a budget that is estimating $3.7 million in estimated revenues. And it is planning to use a fund balance of approximately $458,000 to supplement the rest of the budget. Obviously, a millage is levied to provide the revenues for the township to receive those revenues that the treasurer collects. Estimated general township expenditures for the fiscal year 2023 for the various township activities are as follows, and I'll just briefly review the general fund. The township board, approximately $187,000. Ordinance compliance, approximately $50,000. Supervisor's office, $23,000. Superintendent's office, $292,000. Elections, $35,000. The assessing department, $210,000. Legal services at $50,000. The clerk's office at $217,000. Engineering, $5,000. Board review, $6,000. Treasurer's office, $310,000. Computer services budget, $176,000. Building and grounds, $394,000. Department of Public Works is an estimated $1.148 million. Social services, five, excuse me, five, 5,700, that's too many numbers, 5,700. Parks and Recreation, $178,000. And then operating transfers out to five other funds is a total of $932,000 with an estimated spending of $4.2 million. The rest of the resolution just talks about who is responsible for monitoring the budget and then oversight of the budget and then appropriations are not made to spend and then adoption of the budget by cost center, which just means by department in the general fund.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
The 50,000, do we have in here?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Hi, Ray Kotke. The $50,000 legal budget item, is that just a retainer that we pay yearly, annually?
No, we pay by rendering of service. So when something is requested, a loop council, they bill us for the time that they worked on that item.
Okay, so that's, that's an approximation based on historical usage. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
It's time now?
I appreciated your email as well, asking for clarification. Thank you.
Oh, I appreciate it. It was, you were very detailed and, and I'm sorry to hear you say.
No, thank you.
Magrachi Outer Drive. And I do have some issues, just to spotlight them very briefly. Benefits, the recreation coordinator and the ordinance compliance person are both, both of those positions along with superintendent, I'm just going to say superintendent because this is not Karen related. This is superintendent related salary and benefits along with office staff. Those are staggering. That's, I mean, that's more than the police chief salary. But what I really want to drive home is this point. The benefits that you're offering for the township employees are, I wrote all this down Public employer contribution to medical benefit plans, annual cost limitations for 2023 from the Department of Treasury. Now, if you're a single employee of the township, you're getting over $7,400 in benefits. If you're a single, or an employee with the township and you have a spouse, you're getting over $15,000 worth of benefits. If you are an employee of the township and you have a family, you're getting over $20,000 in benefits. Now, what my point that I want to drive home to you, because I think with these enormous salaries, overly generous benefits, again, please don't take this personally, we go into page, I think it was seven, I can't remember, sorry. we go into page, I think it was seven, I can't remember, sorry. Resolution, this is your resolution to exempt the BOT from the requirements of Public Act 152, Public Funded Health Insurance Controvation Act. And so what you want to do is exempt yourself from these numbers, the 7,400, the, over that, over 15,000 and over 20,000. Apparently, that's not enough, that you want to exempt yourself from the limitations, and I'm assuming you don't want to lower it, so I'm guessing you want to raise it. So the point that I would like to drive home to all of you is that if you're an employee with a spouse, you are getting $15,000, over $15,000 worth of benefits, and that is if you're on a fixed income, receiving only social security, or you're a disabled person or a vet on disability, you are not even getting $15,000 a year. Not in benefits, I'm talking in take-home money. So just to put that in perspective to you all, I think you are asking for too much. You are getting greedy, and I think you should be ashamed. Is that funny to you, Mr. Funes Bliss?
It is deeply funny to me. I think that was incredibly rude to our staff. They deserve every benefit they get. Half of what you just said is factually incorrect.
It's not. Well, all right, tell me which part, and I'll...
Will you tell her how that stuff works? The opting out?
Oh, the opting out?
Yes.
I didn't know which point you wanted me to refer to.
I mean, any of them, but the opting out is just, she doesn't understand that.
So there, if there are, there's an option for our employees that don't take our benefits. They actually get half the costs the township would have paid for them to take the benefit. They actually get to, we give them to not take the benefit. So we actually arrive at cost savings from many of our department members because they choose not to take our insurance, whether they're covered under Veterans Services or they take their spouse's insurance. We actually have several that don't take our insurance here at the township.
So do they get paid for that?
Half of the amount the township would have paid in their health care premium.
But the ones that do accept their benefits do get these amounts that I listed?
That's correct.
So, I'm sorry, what's your point?
My point is that you are incorrect in your assumption of what that meant. We're actually saving the township money, and it makes absolute sense why two people's benefits would cost double the cost of one person's benefits. That's not greed, that's how it works.
I'm not debating that. I'm, I'm not, insurance is insurance. I'm not debating whether insurance should, what they should cover and not cover. What I'm saying is, you guys are spending a boatload of money on benefits.
Benefits cost a boatload of money.
Ryan, what I'm telling you is that people are not making $15,000 a year.
Meg, perhaps the question is, why aren't people making $15,000? Shouldn't our veterans, shouldn't our disabled people be paid more instead of punishing our staff members by saying they should make less?
I cannot go up into Washington DC, and I'm here at my local level trying to tell you...
Why punish our staff? Because those...
I'm not trying to punish your staff.
Cutting benefits is a punishment in my...
I'm trying to tell you that a lot of people are living on less than you're getting for benefits. That's my point. People are living on that. I'm not telling them they don't deserve it. I think it's greedy. Yes, I do. But I'm trying to make a point in that some people are not even bringing home that much money into their home when you're making it in benefits.
I will let you know that each year, we do not get the rates until October, so it's very difficult to understand what kind of increases we're going to be looking at for the next year. But for some time now, this township, and we did not have this discussion at the board level this time, I didn't hear it from anybody with concern, but there will come a time when contracts will have to be renegotiated and that employees will have to take on a share of their costs and their benefits because of the high rising costs. What I can also tell you is right off the top of everyone's salary, 20% is taken from them and goes right into their retirement. They do not have a choice in that matter. So while I do understand that that is a benefit to them, anybody that comes here gets 20% less a year, and it is put away in the MERS retirement system for them. And for a lot of younger people, it's become increasingly difficult, as you were mentioning here, to buy a home and/or even rent an apartment or a home. And that is one of the things that adds to the difficulty in hiring and retaining people, is that when I explain to people that 20% of the top, off the top of their pay is going to be taken away from them, and they're not going to see it for possibly 30 years in the instance of our younger employees, it's difficult to make hires as well. So they're, I appreciate your perspective.
Well, thank you, thank you. Because that is the basis of my point that I'm trying to make, not trying to insult anybody.
I'd encourage you to use words other than greedy then, if you're not trying to insult people.
Do you really want to go there, Mr. The public is rude and snarky?
You can fight with me all you want. I don't think our staff is greedy.
I don't wish to fight with you, but if you brought it up, then you should be ready to respond.
I did. I don't think our staff is greedy.
And have me respond back.
I heard what you said. I don't think our staff is greedy.
Please stop talking over me. This is my time.
It really isn't. It's our time to engage with you. You asked a question and I answered it.
I asked you to expound. I haven't heard anything that changes my mind or says that my statistics are wrong.
Our job isn't to change your mind. You asked a question, you got an answer.
Well, you were wrong, because my statistics are wrong. I understand that there are differences in the way that you want to look at this, but my statistics and my acts are not wrong. Unless, Karen, am I wrong about you wanting to be exempt from this limitation?
No, you're not wrong. I'm asking the board to approve an exemption.
Because you want more?
So that the employees can have more gas.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Thank you.
You're welcome, Meg.
Questions?
No.
No.
Any other questions?
I'm assuming that discussion's finished. Does anybody else have yet? Any other questions? All right, then we'll take a vote on closing the open meeting, and we turn to our regular session.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Whistler?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
All right, let me see if I can read this one out. The next step, it looks as if it's to adopt it. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, yes. If you're willing to take the step tonight and adopt the budget, the first step you would take is to approve the General Appropriations Act resolution for the fiscal year 2023 budget.
I have some questions. What did the health benefit increase turn out to be?
15%.
Phew. The public safety fund balance, it looks like we're using the entirety of what we believe we had at the end of 2021, but there's a note in there that end of year fiscal for, you know, '22 will matter. Most likely, we'll end with some more fund balance, do you think?
In public safety?
Yes.
At this time, looking at the revenue expenditure, I believe the fire department is at approximately a 50% expenditure, and we're 90% of the way through the year. The police department, I believe, is more at an 85% and 90% of the way through the year. So it's possible, but I cannot guarantee that.
Sure, but probable as well, unless the fire chief's going to go on a spending spree.
I, I will say that in the past, our chief, Dave Snyder, does wait towards the end of the year to purchase some of the equipment. So there is some spending at the end of the year.
But he hasn't hired those two positions yet, has he?
No, he has not.
So there's, you're not going to allow him to spend that money other than...
No.
Okay.
So there will be extra staffing benefits in that department.
So then, do you envision, should the case come, where we end up with more public safety fund balance after fiscal year '22, we get the audit mid-fiscal year '23, would you see us changing the budget to use more of that fund balance and less of transfers in from general fund?
I would ask this board to have that conversation, yes.
Okay.
That's a decision for this board.
Yeah, but I think your recommendation is important in that. All right, I have one more question. The $52,000, excuse me, $518 in capital projects, is that for the trail?
That's correct.
That's the leftover money that hasn't been spent yet, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that means none of the other two projects that moved through the process in the improvement plan is being recommended. Okay.
You mean, you made a adjustment, or that statement's not right, because that money is, here we go again, I'm not going to make that man right there unhappy, but I'm going to tell you, you have not appropriated that money for anything. All you did is mark, earmark it that it's available. It was an A word, allocated and appropriated. That's correct. That's correct. It's allocated, but it's not appropriated. And if you're making a statement tonight, that you're saying that that's for that, you're agreeing with that, this board agreed with that, that you just took and hung yourself here.
Well, we did approve it for that purpose. We mean, not have appropriated it or...
I'm sorry.
You did not appropriate it.
Whatever A word you want to use. That was the intent for that money, was the trail. It's not for some park or some other thing other than the trail. That was my point.
And one last thing, as long as I get the floor, I'm going to speak to the, this made three diamonds, we can agree to the deal. Supervisor, I talked about it again, on Friday or whatever day, was it Thursday?
Yes, yes.
It was Friday.
Friday, it was Friday.
You don't have a fund balance until you're done with the financial statements, and you can use fund balance, like I said before, you can use it to take, and it's appropriate to use it to take and amend budgets through the current fiscal year, but it is not appropriate to use it to say you're going to, unless you're going to restrict it, to take and use it for the next fiscal period. And that, that's my point, because it's not even, I mean, you can sit there and you can say all you want. She gets her number from me. I angle at it.
That's correct.
And I don't know what the number is. I'm very careful about that, because if I did know, it would die, because I know what the accountants will tell me.
Well, this is the fiscal year '21 fund balance.
It doesn't matter. It's this year's, it's available for this year to amend the budget. Here's the other thing about that. You could have a catastrophic situation where you could use a whole bunch of money, and you could have a problem. You could have a fire, you could have six feet of snow like you did in New York, you could have all kinds of things between now and the end of the year, and it could utilize some of your fund balance. And I'm not being mean about this, I'm just telling you what the auditors and what the accountants will tell you. Until it's done, until you do the financial statement, you don't know what that fund balance is going to be at the end of the year. It's nice to say that, but if you want to restrict it at the end of the audit, and you say, okay, we're going to restrict this money to go to the next year's fund, you can do that. I wouldn't suggest that, but you could do that, but you're not at that point right now. We've had this conversation, you had it with Erin, you had it with everybody here this last week, and it's not the way it works, and no work ethic.
Does it feel like for me to ask another question?
I think the public hearing is closed.
Oh, it is closed, okay. I didn't hear it was closed, so that's...
No.
I mean, the way, Steve, that this is put into the budget is the use of that full '21 fund balance as revenue for next year.
Can't do it.
That's why it said, that's why I put the statement there, that it is dependent on, it's dependent on the financial statements from the year 2022, and that you may be required to supplement the support of those departments with...
But aren't we voting on this?
The word that you use is commitment. You may have more general fund commitment to this public safety fund. If, in the event that you don't have a fund balance, help you nothing public safety to cover. But you can't just go out and say that you're going to do this at this point in time. I won't even vote, I won't even vote yes on the budget if you do that.
Well, I mean, isn't that what this is? I don't understand, because that's what this is saying. It's in here as an appropriated amount.
If it was done wrong, we've talked about it three times last week, and it can't be done the way, that way. You, it's a good probability that you're going to have some sort of a fund balance there, you're going to have something that you can do with, but you can't pull and say, we're just going to go ahead and we're going to use that. Because what that means is the public safety fund gets in some sort of catastrophic problem. If we have fires, snow, police, whatever we have that goes on in public safety, then what are you going to do? You're going to take money out of the general fund fund balance to take for this year and cover that? That's an illegal expenditure. You already, you just, you just shot yourself in the foot.
Well, I mean, functionally, that's what we're doing anyway.
You have to amend your budget, your public safety budget with public safety funds, unless you don't have money there. You have money there, it's not restricted. Otherwise, you're misstating your revenues and expenditures in your audit.
So when we're saying that we're going to use 400, whatever it was, 50-some thousand dollars in general fund fund balance, how do we square that circle?
That's going to be, that's going to be over the course of all the other funds that fall into the full fund account in the general fund.
But we also can't guarantee that we'll have $450,000 in fund balance in the general fund, just like we can't guarantee the 200...
Why couldn't you? You have a lot bigger fund balance in the general fund than you do in the public safety fund.
I mean, if there was a...
You're talking, you're talking $3 million at least right now tonight, and you're not going to spend $3 million between now and December. And you're talking $275,000 that you want to earmark from 2021 till this next year, just to make yourself feel good. And that's what it's...
Well, it's unlikely, but it's also possible, just like the public safety is unlikely, but not possible.
So by the end of the year, we could, in public safety, if there were, as he said, significant changes, I mean, we're going to pay out the police chief for vacation time and anything that he has accumulated during this time. We may need a budget amendment, and that money would come from the public safety fund fund balance before it would, it has to come from there. So that would be less for next year until the financial statements are complete.
Yeah, I mean, I really get the math. What I don't understand is, if we're not supposed to do it, why is it in here?
Because it wasn't right, correct, of what it called.
So we need to change it tonight, you're saying?
I thought we already did. She made a comment, she made a memo in her, at the bottom of this page.
I put it everywhere, I put it.
She booked, she made, she made a memo that you may need additional commitment from the general fund, basically is what she's saying, to take in, for the 2023 public safety fund.
Everywhere in the budget that we are looking to commit those funds from a fund balance, whether it's the building and zoning fund fund balance, or the public safety fund fund balance, I always feel like I'm repeating myself. I have put that in there because of the conversations that we had last week, that we cannot do that with that fund. But we cannot rely on that, because those might not be the numbers at the end of the financial statements.
And we did this on purpose for that date. We had this meeting at my request. I wanted this thing before the end of the year. I wanted it before December, because you only got one more chance after this next board meeting here to amend your budget, your upper budget. But this is for the protection of the township. You've got a bond project, you got, you got a $4.6 million sewer bond, you got to do, we just approved tonight. And all this stuff comes against you. It's like going to your, to the banking and having your credit score, having it analyzed. If you get comments in your audit, in your financial statements, it's such, okay, you guys booped up, you're not going to do that, and we're going to give you a comment, we're going to slap your hands. And if it's over a certain dollar, which it very well could be, you could be penalized for this.
Okay, I'm...
This is the safe way of doing this. This is why I did this. I brought in somebody besides myself. I brought manage the stairs from back in here. We paid money to have Aaron Stevens here, and Dane was here, and we talked about a lot of different things on Thursday. And then Friday, we talked about it again before we did it on Friday. And that's what we employ people, that's what we pay them people $40,000, $50,000 a year for, is we pay them for that, to back me up, because I feel that I need to be backed up, because I don't want the whole responsibility, sometimes it falls on me, but I try to make good decisions. And I think this is a good decision, and that's why we need to do it. You can, you can, and next year, next spring, when you get your fund balance and you get your dollar amount from the audit, you can restrict that money right there and there, right there and there.
Yeah, I know.
But you can do it at this point.
I know, and that's not what I'm intending to do. But I am trying to clarify, are you saying that putting the number in the budget is okay if we have this note on the bottom?
I'm saying it's okay, you got that hold on the bottom, because that tells you, you're gonna take additional commitment out of the general fund if the money isn't there to take and supply it. There's nothing wrong with that, you're not overstating your expenditures, you're not overstating your revenues by doing that. You're admitting to the auditors, and you're telling the auditors that, yes, this is a possibility, we're gonna have to take and take some money out of the general fund, that they can support the police and fire fund. You don't know, and at the end of these days, you don't know what's gonna happen in the last 30 days of the year. That's the bottom line right there. And I hate to think this is something that we was, because they don't care. Them people don't care one iota about whether or not you are doing this for the good of the township, or the good of the people or not. The only thing they care about is what the General Economy Principles Act says, and how it has to be done. And that's why that's the bottom line, and that's what part of being a treasurer's job is. And I'm pretty vocal about it, but I think we got some pretty good opinions in the past.
Yeah, I'll link up with what, are you finished, Ryan?
I am, thanks.
Okay, no. I'm trying to... So what's told in the audit, which ends December 31, take care of, of 2022, when they talk about the fund balance? That's not fair. I know that's a pretty basic question, but...
I don't understand what you're asking.
Okay, if it's the end of the year, it says we have $200,000 in public safety...
Yep.
Of 2022, so we're doing the 2023 budget.
Yep.
So if I'm understanding, you're saying you can't rely on that? And I'm just throwing out a number.
I'm saying, if you had to buy out Chief Lindemore's contract, and I'm guessing that there's 34, 30, $40,000 there, because it's half of what he loses half of it, and it's a year's salary. And I know that, I know enough about the numbers that comes to them, I don't know what that is, that was... If it's $35,000, $40,000, and you got $275,000, you very well could end up with, be played safe, you could very well end up with $40,000 less than $275 at the end of the year now.
Yeah, this year, 2023.
That's right, now, with that being said, you're gonna have public safety fund commitment, the fund balance at the end of the year, after they get done prorating, like we talked about earlier tonight, after they get done prorating the insurance, they get done prorating our 911 contracts and all that stuff, they fall halfway in the year, they'll take half that money, they'll go one way and half will go the other way. All that stuff is a, it's a, I don't know how to explain it. It really isn't, it's a yes. They'll tell you exactly what it is, because they'll go back and look at history, and they'll tell you exactly what it's about.
So in 2021, whatever they said was funded up isn't there?
You might be, you might be over, or you might be significantly under, and I wouldn't wanna take gamble that, so...
So 2021 is not...
2021, 2021 is what you have for fund balance, the $275,000, what they're talking about right now.
Okay, so you can't use that in...
What they have, and you can use it this year for the current year budget, you cannot restrict it for next year, until you know what you're, what you have at the end of the year.
Because we're not all the way through our financial year...
For 2022.
For 2022.
Correct.
You can't commit the money.
In 2021.
For 2023.
No, I understand, but if you have, because our audit goes to December 31 of 2021.
So right now, we have approximately $200...
2022.
$275.
2022 audit, this year, you already had 2021's audit.
I know, that's what I'm saying, so in 2021...
So we had $275,000.
You got, you got 200, this right here, I got the detail right here, I got the page open to it, it's $278,496.97 is your fund balance in the public safety fund tonight, that's what's in there, without any amendments being made, or without any prorations being done. And then you also have Chief Lindemore's contract, which you have to take and buy him out. I don't think we have anything else going on over there, anybody's coming or going or leaving or anything, so I don't think we have anything else. But there's roughly around $40,000 that's gonna be for that. So there's a good chance, yes, to make you feel better, there's a good chance you're gonna have $250,000 anyhow, or thereabouts, of fund balance in the public safety fund, which you can use to take you to run the public safety fund. This year, you didn't use it, you can use it. This year, tax revenues went up because of new bills and things like that, and we've seen a little more revenue than what we thought we was gonna see, and what we budgeted for because of COVID-19 and all those goofy things we've had in the last few years, it's been hard to predict that.
Well, and this year was the first year for fund balance in the public safety fund, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so we didn't budget for it, because we didn't even know it existed.
You're a smart man, you just set a model up right there, because that's what it's all about.
So what happens to the fund balance or the leftover dollars in 2021?
It gets rolled over into 22.
Into 22's general fund.
The great thing is, it's, no, it stays in the public safety fund, that's the great thing. But the bottom line is, is that you can use that for commitment. You won't have to put as much commitment out of the general fund, because you already got, what do we got, $900,000 is gonna come in from commitment, or naming that, it's about $700, $400, something, or whatever it is.
Oh, for just public safety?
Yeah.
Yeah, $700,000.
$700,000, but they could reduce that, by whatever that amount is. If you as a board choose to do that, this year, we didn't do that. We need to get better at that. That's one thing we're not doing. Quarterly amendments and quarterly budgets, and we're not doing that here, and it's gonna take some work with the superintendent and I to talk about this, because technically, I'm a fiscal officer, and it needs, we need to communicate about that, and you need to do that, but you can very well use that money and lessen the commitment out of the general fund from 2003 to transfer into the public safety fund or on the public safety fund.
For 2022.
But you cannot take the money you have from '21 right now, and you can't put that in, because you're understating revenues and expenditures, and you gotta get an answer to that.
So probably at the end of the second quarter, or possibly in the third quarter, you could amend it.
Yes.
In 2023.
You should be able to do it early in the second quarter.
I just mean, I can't...
Yeah, there's no reason why you can't. The only problem you risk is, is if you, you may have to go back. If you get too generous, or the police get in some sort of a jam, or Fire Department gets in some sort of a jam, you may have to go back to the general fund and make up for it, if you have some sort of a lawsuit, or if you had some sort of a catastrophic issue, you had police cars that got crashed, or something of that matter, or a fire truck burn off, or anything like that. I'm not, don't mean to be your insurance agent, but these things, this is my world, folks.
Or we could completely decide, this board could decide to purchase a new fire truck with that money, or...
That's right. That's right.
Something else.
It's, you got the right idea, you're just a year ahead of yourself. You need, next year, after the audit's done, you need to have a P E, you need to set a budget for them, you need to talk about this, and focus through it, or whatever you wanna call it, and you need to decide what you wanna do going forward. We've trimmed it from what we, where we were last year. We were thinking this year, we were gonna put a million dollars in fund commitment to the public safety fund to make a roll, that I talked, yet I'm not doing it. And you guys all look at me like I was crazy, but guess what, we didn't do it, did we?
We still think you're crazy.
No, that's maybe you gotta be crazy to do these jobs.
Crazy, crazy.
There's nothing wrong with crazy.
But no, that's the only, that's a hard thing to deal with. And we're, we're so close to being a city here in the way we, our finances run, the way our financial pieces run, because we all know this, we've done this way for over 40 years, used to say 39 years, it was more like 42 or 43 now. But we run like a municipality that's a little bit different because of the way we're structured, and that's the reason why we got made it here, that's the reason why your treasurer does what we're supposed to do. I hear everybody tell me that, you know, if you're gonna retire, then we're gonna hire a finance director. Well, you know what, I wouldn't mind making $150,000 a year, because you guys won't pay me that.
There you go.
But that's what a finance director's gonna get paid. But that, you know, but we have to have more communication about this, and we're getting bigger, our funds changed, as you said, we didn't have it last year. Funds are gonna change again, all of our charter accounts, I might add, for our new uniform charter accounts due to the state of Michigan, that's theirs turned in, they've got all of our documentation, they're working on it, I haven't heard anything more about it. I'm hoping that we'll see it by the end of December, so we get it done in time. But we're doing everything we can to make sure that we continue to keep our good fiscal relationship with the state of Michigan, and we keep getting our revenue sharing checks, and we keep getting everything we're getting that they can offset all the expenses it takes for a township of this size.
All right, is there any other questions? All right, I need a motion for the adoption of 2023.
I'm making a motion for the 2023 budget as proposed.
Second.
All right.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes, Ms. Howell?
No.
Mr. Whistler?
Yes.
Mr. Bancy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman? Mr. Funesbless?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have Resolution I, F, well, actually, 14F.
Sorry.
Is that what we're at? I keep going back, 13, you're cap. I, the resolution for the General Appropriations Act.
No, it's the next one, you just did the...
We just did that, so it's double I. Resolution to exempt public funding health insurance contribution.
Correct, this was just talked about during public comment. This is approving this, is saying that the Township Board is willing to underwrite the cost of health benefits for the township and is not adhering to state requirements. We look at this every year, and make that decision yearly, so this is not an ongoing thing in terms of that it doesn't expire. We look at it each time we develop a budget.
Have we opted out since 2011?
Correct, we have.
Okay, I'll make the motion for the exemption from Public Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act.
Second.
The purpose being, because this would be 15% of your public funding as opposed to 20% that we do now, is that?
It means that the numbers that Ms. Ritchie indicated earlier for a single person, an employee plus one in a family, would be the limits that the township could provide to each employee if we were to adhere to the state's limits.
But they would still have the same coverage. Do we know that or not?
No.
No.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying we exempt ourselves, because we pay more than that for employees.
But your funded health insurance contribution, is there a difference in what they receive as benefits, other than dollars?
Can I try and answer this?
Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
There always has been. So I will tell you what mine costs per month when I got signed up, but there's always been a difference between if you were single, if you were married, or if you were married with family.
But what about your benefits? So the benefits will fall different?
This is for health insurance.
No, I understand, so your health insurance benefits...
They're getting the benefits from their spouse.
Would be less.
So it's whatever their spouse's program would offer.
My spouse's nanny, that's not...
You have to.
This says that the township will underwrite the whole cost.
No, I, yeah, that I get, so I'm asking if benefits are...
If the benefits were more expensive than the numbers that Ms. Ritchie stated earlier, let's say it was $7,000...
$7,400 for a single, $15,000 for a married spouse.
So I'm going to use a single. So if the benefits cost more than $7,000, the employee would have to pay the rest of that. The township would pay $7,000, and the employee would pay whatever the balance was for the coverage that we provided. This says we'll pay the whole cost.
Oh, I see. So you're saying that the funded health insurance is 100%...
Covered by the township.
Covered by...
The township.
Not the employee, but the township.
The township. Okay.
Yep.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes, Ms. Howell?
No.
Mr. Whistler?
Yes.
Mr. Bancy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funesbless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Okay. This we're gonna look at the resolutions dealing with salaries. You wanna take them one at a time?
Take them all.
We probably have to take them one at a time, right? Because they're formal resolutions.
That would be, all right. Then we need a vote on a resolution to establish township supervisor's salary.
I would move to establish this resolution for the township supervisor's salary in the amount of $18,669 per year for...
Is it due with, yep, there it is. Okay.
I'll second that.
Ms. Howell?
No.
Mr. Whistler?
Yes.
Mr. Bancy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funesbless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes.
Okay, we have a resolution to establish township's clerk salary.
Madam Supervisor, I would move to establish a resolution for the 2023 salary of the office clerk shall be $79,266 per year.
I'll second that.
Mr. Whistler?
Yes.
Mr. Bancy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funesbless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes, Ms. Howell?
No. Okay, we have a resolution to establish township treasurer's salary.
You guys are on your own.
No, no.
I'll move approval of the resolution to establish the township treasurer's salary as of January 1, 2023, in the amount of $79,266 annually.
I'll second that. And you're worth a lot more.
Mr. Bancy?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funesbless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes, Ms. Howell?
No.
Mr. Wissawser?
Yes. I personally don't know what the word.
No, a little slower. Okay, we have a resolution to establish trustee salary, which I think comes out to, what, five hundred seven dollars or? You guys don't know that, or you don't whatever. All right. Is there a motion?
Let it be resolved at the end of the year. January first, 2023, the salary of the office trustee shall be five thousand six hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents per annum.
Second.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funesbless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes, Ms. Howell?
No.
Mr. Wissawser?
Yes.
Mr. Bancy?
Yes.
You're so patient. She doesn't say that, even when we sit there, she's like, all right. For the next, it's going to be thirteen, I keep going back to that, I forgot that down. Introduction, first reading, is that correct? Zoning ordinance thirty-one seventy-nine.
Well, I did go back and do a little research on how we got here with this ordinance today myself. After some discussion with staff, because it has been a while, so I'll recap how we got here real quick.
Good, thank you.
Um, so if you guys remember, probably two-ish months ago, this ordinance came and got introduced. We wanted to make sure that we weren't affecting the farming community in terms of large and small farms in a negative fashion with this ordinance. Also had some concerns as it related to setbacks around manure storage. So for those reasons, it was taken back to the planning commission and we did do a little bit further research on this. We reached out to the farming community and spoke with a number of local farmers, both large and small. Our smallest farm being a two-acre farm, our largest farm being over forty acres, to make sure some of the lot coverage standards and the rural district didn't affect anybody in a negative fashion. And then we also went back and double-checked our GIS analysis to make sure that farming wasn't impacted in a negative way, along with some of our more commercial land use development that we've seen along Saginaw in recent years. I think some of that was talked about tonight. Um, so that all looked like it was in good shape. We did, however, make some changes as it relates to the storage of manure. That will come up in a different item, I believe, tonight if we're able to get to it. So essentially, if, just to go over what we talked about in the intro, what this ordinance is looking to do is create the built environment the way I believe this community and the planning commission would like to see it. We've restructured what the interpretation is for lot coverage to include items like driveways and parking lots. This is something you typically see in communities that are a little bit wetter. So you see this a lot in the northwest of the country. You see this a lot in Michigan just because clay-based soil, lot of rain, gets quite flooded in the spring. So this will help us mitigate a lot of the drainage issues. I'm sure as you guys driven around over the years, especially on Drumhill or in the spring, you'll see some drainage issues on both sides. This helps mitigate some of that. Because we're creating a more holistic view of what lot coverage is, we've also adjusted the percentages of what the lot coverage standards are throughout the different districts. That's where GIS came in and we did a bunch of analysis of what, you know, the current lot coverage looks like for most of these districts, accounting for parking and driveways. So we feel like this won't create an abundance of legal nonconformities. We feel like this will create better incentive structures when we work with our developers. So they'll think about, do I have a plethora of parking? Is there a more efficient way I can do my drives here? Can I maybe put the parking in a more efficient way? Do I need to necessarily wrap my building in concrete? Different factors like that. So I feel personally, and I think the planning commission's in agreement, that this will largely benefit the township. Do you guys have any questions?
I mean, it looks like you went from twenty percent to fifty percent, does that sound right? And then parcels that are greater than four acres, the green space, there's two percentage sets above to calculate. I'm assuming you're wrong.
Yeah, no, so the rural district, we got, and this is why we went out once again, doubled down and checked out to, checked in with our farmers to make sure this wasn't going to affect them in a negative way. The rural district, it does get a little complex because we're trying to think about our farmers here on this one. So we're going from, prior to this draft, it was twenty percent in the rural district flat out. Doesn't matter if you have two acres, or if you have a hundred. Now, that can be, that could cause some externalities up there in the rural district. If the whole point is to keep the rural district rule, but you own a hundred acres, you have twenty percent of lot coverage that you're allowing, well, that twenty percent can go anywhere in that a hundred acres. So if you want to do twenty percent worth of lot coverage development, let's say all on one acre, possibly adjacent to the road, which where most development goes, then that would become a pretty built-out area on that a hundred acres. And you can build a very large facility at twenty percent. So what we're looking to do is refine it a little bit. So the maximum lot coverage shall not exceed fifty percent on the first four acres within this district. Any acreage past that first four, there would only be allotted five percent. And that goes up to however many acres they have. So like in the case of like a hundred-acre large farm, you would have that twenty percent for whatever, four acres, and then five percent for all the acreage past that. So that other ninety-six acres would be at five percent. And you can total those together and locate the structures wherever you need to. After doing analysis on our large farms, this is more than enough acreage to build out, including any kind of drive or parking they would need.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, guys, that's all.
Thank you.
Do we have to vote on the first reading?
Well, it says item fraction, so.
Yeah, we have to vote on this. So I'll make the motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance number three one point seven nine, Lot Coverage and Green Space.
Second.
Mr. Funesbless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes, Ms. Howell? Mr. Wissawser?
Yes.
Mr. Bancy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting us, we're kind of in for a reading. All right, we are on quarter budget amendment H, it would be thirteen H.
Thank you, what we have for you tonight are five items here. The first four would be from the general fund, fund balance, which include costs to cover higher fuel, some masonry repair that was done to the D W garage, the higher cost of treating Park Lake noxious weeds and deterring the geese there, and the purchase of two handicap accessible picnic tables for parks. The fifth item you have is the use of ARPA funds for the purchase of two vacant lands on Park Lake Road that are enumerated there by their parcel owners.
This is a red boy, it seems to be talking about twenty thousand that was given to the senior services. Is that subtracted from?
ARPA funds? Yes, that's listed on, I think, the fourth page. It's shown as using twenty thousand dollars plus.
It doesn't show up on your, it does not show up on your fund balance sheet as of yet because you haven't paid it.
Correct, they have not submitted any invoices.
They have, however, paid the, they have over checked last week for the eighteen thousand dollars for the property agreement that you guys agreed to. That does show up. Let me know if you have those funded or you have at this point.
Okay.
And there is no, and you'll also notice that there is no fund mouse that ARPA, even if that is current.
Not yet.
You can't have a fund mouse, like, currently, believe that, that's why you get that stated that way, stated differently.
All right, is there reason, like, who would write the twenty thousand dollar check?
Well, it starts with the clerk's office and they take it for a reduced invoice and then invoice goes through a couple different places there. And then eventually it comes to the treasurer's office. The treasurer actually gets him the check stock and pulls the check out, puts it in the printer and writes the check. And then he takes and turns it over to the deputy, or to the clerk, excuse me, I forget the clerk here. The clerk signs the check and then it goes from the clerk over to the deputy treasurer.
No, I understand that.
The deputy treasurer mails it away or something. That's pretty awesome to explain to all that.
The ankles connected to the lead bone and the lead bone, okay, got it.
Like you asked a question.
No, what I'm going to ask you is, who is it that writes the twenty thousand dollar check? And don't start all over again, you're saying.
I just told you.
From, from the clerk's office is where it starts. So in other words, the senior services would have to come to the clerk.
We wouldn't have a bill or an invoice.
An invoice that they would.
Oh, I see.
By statute, all ABs go through the, through the clerk's office and it's delegated however they choose to do it. The clerk, clerk, in the way that for years, as the deputy clerk does. And then eventually it gets to the treasurer's office. The treasurer actually abuses the law and writes the check. And then, and then it takes and turns it back to the clerk and after he signs it and she signs it, and then it goes to the deputy treasurer.
Most likely, what will occur?
Five people have to touch this.
Yes, they did.
I get that.
Most likely, because I've been working with Judy and Kim and the subcommittee.
That's.
Most likely, like Mr. Doak Bloss would issue us an invoice for services rendered. And I would make a check request that I would submit to accounts payable.
Gotcha.
And then it would go through all those steps that treasurer Wissawser just shared with you.
Twice.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, there's a lot, you, you mean.
Keep it up.
You'd be surprised, one check is a lot of work.
Oh, no question.
We wrote two hundred twenty-five last week.
It was did, two hundred twenty-five was.
But the election workers could say all that and be paid. And I'm here to tell you that, and old folks remember, you were gone and.
April.
She got to sign it.
She was complaining to me about that. I said, don't complain to me, I didn't write it, but.
All right, so do we need to vote on that page, page one?
I need to make a motion to approve the fourth quarter budget amendments. Yes. Twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes, Ms. Howell?
I'm making sure I understand, we're talking about the first page, right? Yes, yes, yep, yes.
Mr. Wissawser?
Yes.
Mr. Bancy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funesbless?
Yes.
Proposal for the expansion and improvement of the Bath Township Senior Center. That would be I, thirteen.
Thank you, I'm glad to see that Kim Fouts, a returning, reappointed member of the Senior Services Advisory Board is still here. She's been engaging along with Judy and other members of the Senior Services Advisory Board in developing these proposals, both with the facilitator and with the architect. And I can tell you that Kim has been very busy reaching out to the police chief and to our assessor and to different groups in this township. They're very thorough. I think that the presentation you had from Ms. Gardi earlier was a beautiful presentation on what they're trying to accomplish with the expansion of possibly not just the building, but the services that we provide for our seniors in this community. And I would ask you tonight to authorize me, with the support of the Senior Services Advisory Board, to engage in both the facilitation services provided by Doak Bloss and the architectural services for the potential expansion and improvement of the Bath Township Senior Center.
I shall move.
I'll second that.
Ring your bell.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ring your bell. You do need one of those for me because my line is, I don't think.
I understand engaging Mr. Bloss. I think that makes a ton of sense. It's what we had intended with the spirit of passing that resolution. I think we are way too early to engage.
Certainly.
An architect. I mean, we have to decide whether we even think that physical expansion is the right answer before we put money into an architect. I worry that this is sort of pushing us to get to us, make a decision, make a decision, make a decision quickly, when I thought the whole point of it was to have a sort of robust, thorough process.
I think the intent is really to have an architect walk through the process with us and the community that we're serving, so that when, if we get to the point of deciding that an expansion is needed, they're not coming into a project cold, not having heard what the community desires for the space. And for us to try to, I didn't say us, staff in the Senior Services Advisory Board, to try to communicate with them what was communicated to us or what was captured in the community during those conversations. So it's really the intent is to have somebody walk through that process with us so that they're familiar with the project, they're familiar with the feedback, they're familiar with our community, and they're familiar with what the potential is going forward. So it's really just to have them with us on the jury.
I mean, that's how every architectural project works, is you don't hire them until you've gotten the feedback and you know what you want. This just seems like it's step ten when we're on step one. I just think it's, it's way too far down, or too early in the process to be engaging an architect.
Sometimes I sit here and I say to myself, I'd much rather be lucky than good. And tonight I got really lucky because the architect has agreed to, to these two meetings, they listen to the community and not charge us to be involved, okay? So he really doesn't start his work unless we engage him later.
But this contract is to be authorized now for forty-five hundred dollars.
No. All this does is get it set. You're not writing the check now.
You can't.
Until he gets his work done.
Until he gets his work done. So basically, what he's agreed to do is to sit on these public hearings, if you will, and listen to the public before he does any renderings.
But he's doing that through the lens of having a signed forty-five hundred dollar contract. If this didn't exist, he wouldn't be volunteering to come to these meetings for free.
Well, I've been involved in a couple of projects myself and it's really been helpful to have the architect there on day one, that's all I'll share with you. It's been a real benefit to have him there.
I believe it, but I would guess in those projects, you had decided you wanted to build something to begin with. We haven't even had literally any discussion at the board level about actually expanding the senior center. This still remains in a committee. I mean, we've given them money to do some solicitation of feedback.
I'm going to bounce off of yours, trustee, with regards to that because my thought was that we were dealing with the parking lot. So when in fact, and I did vote for it, but when I went back and reviewed it, it was like, that isn't what I understood. So the spirit of what he's talking about, to me, dealt with the architect coming in and looking at the building to say, okay, you can park, or no, you can't park, you know, you can't expand it. The facilitator was in order to be able to find out what it was. So you're right, we're putting many years ahead of what it is that we want to do. I didn't, I didn't understand, now it's my fault. I didn't understand that you're talking about actually expanding the facility. I thought you were going to look at parking lot and say, okay, we can either expand to the north or we can expand to the south or whatever, you know, we decided we were going to do. For parking, not for looking at what it was that was going to do. So that, that is mine, so I, I'm afraid I don't support, as much as I love the senior center. And I do, you do an awesome job.
So in the past, the Senior Services Advisory Group has, board, excuse me, that group, has applied each year to the capital improvements project program. And they've applied for a project that includes an expansion. And at the time, we had the great, a gracious volunteer that helped us put together a rendering that could be used to show the planning commission what an expansion could be and what we thought the cost could be. But that's not exactly, I think, in the, in the senior services board's eyes, what might be needed now and in the future. So I think having an architect here to walk through the process might result in some conceptual drawings that can show you what the space, what could be done with the current space, what could be done with an expanded space, and would give that group a better number to give the planning commission for a CIP project. But I think right now, there are a lot of unknowns. So I don't think they're working with concrete concepts, drawings, and feet. with concrete concepts, drawings, and feedback. So I think that's what they're trying to do here.
I appreciate that. I, I don't think the problem is we don't have a good number to go into the CIP. The problem is, we haven't talked about, do we want to expand the senior center? So if we went about it this way, if Parks and Rec wanted to build a new park, we would pay for an architect to render drawings. If Building and Grounds wanted a new building, we'd pay for an architect. If the fire department wanted to expand, like, how much architectural fees would we get to before someone says, we should decide whether this is even a good idea before we pay for that?
I can't answer that specific question, but just the concept in general, I think, was to get closer to a more accurate number for a decision to be made.
I think they need to show need before they show cost.
Okay.
Like, at this point, the numbers you've provided to us is that we are not fully utilizing the senior center as it stands. So until we get some evidence that shows that that could change, it makes no sense to me to expand it at this point. I'm not saying I'm opposed to that in all ideas, but like, we've got no evidence, and it's not, I need a drawing or a number. Someone's got to tell us what the thought is that's going to bring more people in there to necessitate a larger physical space.
Do you have a discussion?
No, I have a motion.
It's what I have to talk to. Well, if I'm saying you have a discussion, I'm going to take your second. Okay, I'm going to read the vote. Mr. Fiosblass?
No.
Ms. Kellerman?
No.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Wissawser?
No.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, no. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
I move that we authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract as provided with Mr. Doak-Bloss.
Ideas?
The facilitator.
The facilitator, but I thought we already did that.
We authorize, well, let me be careful in my wording, Marie.
Because I thought we already.
Conceptually, we stated that we were hoping that money would be allocated for this purpose. It may be a different A word, but that was the spirit. So now we have to authorize Karen to sign a contract, which I believe will do the other A word that Steve wants us to do.
Okay. I don't think I can support that, only because the advisory board itself is exactly that, it advises to board. I'm not sure staff, nothing personal, I.
You're done on.
Round up. I'm not sure that's the route to go when you're dealing with an advisory board. Now, maybe I'm all wet on that, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's the right direction to go, because the board is going to have to do their own, and Judy, as the chair, has already contacted and already done her due diligence.
Is this, is this a, what you're saying is, you want them to be in charge of the township's money, how they're going to spend?
Yes, I do.
Not legal?
No, I like you to be in charge of what, and I have to say.
You're looking at, this is being spun out of ARPA funds, which is very important for to be right to begin with.
Correct.
And then on the other side of the coin, which I don't like it all the time, I struggle a lot from time to time, but we seem to get along all right, but her contract says she's in charge of all capital projects.
Is that a capital project?
No, it's pretty close.
No, that's.
It's almost pretty close. I mean, but you ought to be, you might be careful what you want to, what you do with this, because these are ARPA funds, and you have, you have things you have to do with ARPA funds.
Yes, you do.
And I'm going to bring another thing up, because that got brought to my attention, and we had this conversation a week or so ago, the superintendent and I did, that they have a fund balance in, in the senior center. I know we beat that to death tonight, but we're going to talk about it once more.
Yes.
The senior advisory center is in charge of the fund balances, senior center. The township board can decide what, how they're going to spend the fund balance. Bottom line, they're not fiscal officers of the township. You seven people who are six of them are the fiscal officers of the township, and we are responsible for doing what needs to be done here. So that is, if the, if the fund balance has to be spent, or if somebody decides they want to spend some fund balance to do that, this, this board can vote to do that, and I'm sorry, but the advisory board is not a fiscal board.
No, I, no, I understand that exactly.
Yep.
But I'm just not sure that when you're talking about the.
That's my turn. Ryan, I've submitted your motion.
Okay.
You what?
I've submitted this motion.
Oh, all right, because we're still in a discussion. If, that's okay. No, I, I've said my piece. I just don't, wait, but that's okay. So go for a vote. I don't think there's any more discussion. Is there? We should.
We're just going to engage in the proposed services with Bloss, right?
Mr. Bloss, yeah.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
I'm still going to say no.
Mr. Wissawser?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fiosblass?
Yes.
Good. Okay. We're on item fourteen. New business. Items for introduction and discussion. Reserving ordinance thirty-one eighty. Think you're up again now.
All right, well, thirty-one eighty, this is the long-awaited lighting ordinance. This was at the planning commission for quite some time. We worked on this one for quite a while. Township staff also worked with a lighting engineer on this one, because it gets quite technical in some aspects of it. This is to build out some of the lighting standards as it applies to residential and commercial developments, but primarily commercial site lighting. This in no way affects street lighting. That was a conversation we had at the planning commission, but the result of that was that if street lighting wanted to be explored by this body, that would be better covered in some kind of street lighting ordinance, a standalone street lighting ordinance. The standards around regu, around residential properties are quite minimal. Basically, just keep the light on your property and keep the source of illumination not visible from the street. So nothing really has changed there in regards to residential lighting. Commercial lighting has been built out a little bit. This does several things. So one, it creates a better, more consistent lighting pattern across, well, attempts, I guess, to create a more consistent lighting pattern across the township in terms of light intensity and then kind of color of lighting. So one of those technical aspect, aspects I was talking about was we got a lot into, you know, blue lighting versus yellow lighting, and then the intensity of lighting. We talked a lot about safety and walkways. Some of the apartments on Chandler were mentioned in that conversation. There's several, several buildings within those apartments where even though the parking lot is well lit, some of the walkways between the buildings themselves are not well lit. This can obviously be a safety hazard. You know, you could imagine you're a young student, you're trying to walk home at night. Class gets out at six, seven, it's totally dark, walkways aren't covered. That's problematic. So we wanted to cover that, ensure that developers are thinking about these aspects. Parking lot regulations as it relates to lighting, not something that was covered before, something that's attempted to be covered here. I guess overarching, one of the main things we were trying to do with this lighting ordinance is thread that needle between the rural character of that and the more commercial activities that we're seeing in the southern portion of the township. And there is a term called dark sky compliance. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that. What essentially we attempt to do is create well-lit, evenly lit sites, making sure that the lighting is directed down at the areas it needs to go and shielded from going up into the sky. That way, when you're living in northern Bath, if your home on your property, you're out on your deck, you can still see the stars. So trying to maintain that rural character, like I said, but also play some language over to what the commercial industry wants to see as well. Another thing that the lighting ordinance attempts to do is build out some of the standards that are required in our photometric plans. So as a part of, I think it was just prior to my time here, photometric plans were added as a requirement for the site plan review process. However, there's no standards on what we want to see on our photometric plans. So I've worked with a number of developers this year on many special use permits, many commercial developments, and the gamut of these photometric plans, again, they're all over the map. And so what this attempts to do is lay out some standard practice for what Bath Township wants to see on our photometric plan. So it, I guess if you don't know, a photometric plan is a sheet within the site plan that shows what the lighting is going to look like on the site. There's really two main schools of thought on how to show that, either ISO scores, so there'll be a little plus or negative sign on if, and then a little score next to it on what the lighting intensity is. They usually do them in ten-foot intervals, and it grids out the entire site. At each point where there's a grid, you get a score that shows you what lighting intensity is. The other method is ISO lines, so it almost looks like a topographic map, but instead of elevation, it's showing lighting intensity. So I showed one to the clerk today that we got, and the lighting scores stopped at where the parking lot ended. Well, that's problematic, because I don't, I can't tell from their photometric plan if those scores continue to go off the parcel itself, because they're only showing me to the parking lot. But all we require currently in our ordinance is a photometric plan. We don't say anything about going to the edge of the parcel. So what, one thing we made sure we did here was say, we need you not only to measure to the edge of your parcel, but ten feet beyond the edge. That way, we can see if the lighting's spilling off of the site itself. So little technical things like that that probably don't matter to most people when they're reviewing the plan, but matter a lot to me and will be mattering to you when you're driving down the street and you're getting blinded by, you know, the car dealership lighting, as I'm sure many people have when they drive past a car dealership, which is a land use that has a particularly intense lighting. So now putting that aside, the next thing that this lighting ordinance attempts to do is give a little bit more leeway to what the planning commission is able to do as a part of their site plan review. So we're just talking about car dealerships as a very intense lighting use. Maybe on the other end of that spectrum would be like outdoor restaurant areas are particularly not intense lighting use. So they like to go with a really soft amber lighting, kind of create that mood, restaurant lighting. So it's difficult for developers when we set one flat standard and then we try to apply across any number of land uses. That's where the planning commission comes in. That's where they can look at these standards, see what the general concept is, and then if need be, kind of interpret the standards, and maybe even in some cases, as a case of like the two extremes, ice cream parlor versus car dealership, deviate from the typical standards to make those land uses make sense. So it gives them that authority as well. And then it also just includes some visuals, because pictures help. People are trying to figure this stuff out. They're trying to read the ordinance. They don't, they have no background, and they're not a lighting engineer. A couple pictures can help them figure things out. It also helps, the last image helps explain some of these concepts we're talking about, about dark sky lighting, directing that light downwards, not up into the sky. Any questions? Yeah.
I'm going to get really specific for you.
Okay.
Do we consider, and you would know this, or staff would know this, as to whether or not Bath Charter School would be commercial? And what I'm asking is, on the road that goes down to the middle school, for example, that light apparently shines into private homes.
Mm-hmm.
Because the LED, when they changed to that, it became very bright. Is that a commercial?
So we have had some, we actually have had conversations about schools. Fair question. So we do not have any authority to regulate their lighting.
No, that is our light. Apparently, according to the school, that's our light post. That's there. So that's.
So if it's a streetlight post, that's not covered in this ordinance, because if that's, if we have an appetite to do that, then that should be covered in a separate streetlight ordinance, similar to like a sewer ordinance. But that's, if it's something that is within the rope right away, at any point, action can be taken. We don't need an ordinance to fix that.
Yeah, I, that was told to me, that that's one of our lights.
If a concern is brought, we can work with the consumers and the homeowner, the board of our lighting, whoever has the, the lighting post, to resolve an issue if there's an issue with that.
Yeah.
Yep, there is. So I'll pass that on, and if it comes, it'll come.
Yeah, and one big benefit of this process, I think, has been the relationship building that we've had through our lighting experts as long, as well as consumers' energy. We've worked kind of hand in hand with all parties to develop this ordinance. That's been positive.
Thank you. They're, they're well done. I, I sat in on those, and they are somewhat complicated.
Yeah.
And we think it would be a light to light, right?
I learned a lot of new words.
Not, not true.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Your motion?
No.
It's new business, introduction.
Oh, it's a discussion item. Gotcha. I'm ready to vote on it. Heck, I thought it was okay. Good job. But I will definitely pass that on. Yeah, I appreciate that. It would bring some attention, which is, that's, we can't be.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
You show unshielded barn lights.
Mm-hmm.
So in the middle of my four acres, my barn light was not shielded, was illegal?
No, no. So is your, it's a resident, it's a residential property?
No, it's farm.
We can't, we can't regulate agriculture. Lighting is also something that's regulated at the state level. We would consider your property residential. Your barn light's fine.
It says unshielded barn light, so it's a question.
We, we would consider, you're fine.
Okay.
No, it's a fair question.
It is a fair question.
All right, it looks like you've got, well, you did a vote.
No.
We've, well, you've got one more. It's thirty-one eighty-one, sorry.
Yep.
I'm looking at eighty. No, I got eighty-one. Okay.
That's fine. All right, so this was that other ordinance I alluded to earlier when we were talking about the lot coverage, when we had ordinance that talked about the storage of manure, and the language was shall be located, shall not be, I guess, located any closer than a hundred feet to the lot line. So that's actually an ordinance that's unenforceable. So through this process, we learned that farm, large, small, medium, is in compliance with GLAMP standards, which are the generally accepted agriculture and management practices set by the state of Michigan as a part of the Right to Farm Act under, what's the agency? EMDAR. Yeah. Then a nuisance cannot, a nuisance violation cannot be written. So we did two things. So one, we, and I remember when this was at the planning commission, we had pages and pages of these GLAMP standards. They get very specific and very detailed. I think the one that related to manure was two hundred, three hundred pages long. So we didn't include it in your packet, but what we're basically saying here is, if a facility, property is in compliance with these standards, then you're in compliance with Bath standards. Another benefit of doing this is, we don't have to determine if they're in compliance with that standards, because EMDAR has an inspector, his name's Dave, talked to him on the phone for a while, that covers our area, and he'll go out and determine if they're in compliance with GLAMP standards or not. And our clerk will receive a letter as to what the determination was. Also, so that's one benefit. This can get inspected and enforced, and it doesn't cost the township anything to do and doesn't require any staff time. Obviously, I'm biased maybe by like that, because that frees us up to do all of our enforcement inspection we're supposed to do. The second thing is that future proofs is ordinance. So as those three hundred-plus pages change, and they change their standards, we don't have to come back into our ordinance year over year and change it. We just say, we go with the GLAMP standards. So that's a nice little feature as well.
Your thoughts?
Sounds like a great job to have. I'd like to be the inspector.
All right.
Or if it requires votes.
Oh, I'm sure. Don't worry, you're saying, don't, that's a problem.
Put you in touch with Dave.
All right, any other questions? Looks like, all right, do we have a motion? Oh, this is, I'm sorry. I'm in such a hurry here. I'm in such a hurry.
I'm sorry. I'm in such a hurry over here. I'm in such a hurry.
Are we back?
Next time.
Okay, thank you, Miles.
Now.
I thought you guys might be interested in some election numbers. I thought they were really interesting, so I thought I'd share them with you. We have a total of nine thousand five hundred and thirty-four registered voters in the Bath Township. With the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two general, general election, we had five thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight people vote, which was about sixty-one point six five percent of Bath registered voters.
That's fantastic.
Wow.
That is, that is no kidding.
This included many students that came to the township office on election day to either change their address so they could vote here, or to register to come and vote. Many times during the day, we were busier at the counter than what they were in this precinct. With the August second, two thousand twenty-two primary election, we had two thousand six hundred and nine people vote, which was only twenty-one point eighteen percent of the registered voters. Bath Township has a total of three thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight voters who are on the permanent absentee voter list. So these are people who want us to send them an application. When they receive their application, they have a choice. If they want to vote absentee, they would fill the application out and return it to us, or they can just throw the application away and come in and vote on election day.
Okay.
We had a total of two thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven voters return their applications for the November election, and they voted by absentee ballot. We have a total of five precincts in Bath Township, and we had a total of fifty-nine election inspectors that worked with the November election, along with many, many township employees that helped out in different steps of the election.
Any questions?
Oh, there's a lot of numbers. I just thought it was, I like numbers, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for having such a nice account.
Yes.
Could you repeat the amount of registered voters that we have in Bath Township?
Um, nine thousand five hundred and thirty-four.
Thirty.
Yeah.
What are we paying them an hour?
Fourteen dollars and fifteen dollars an hour.
I think we should begin to think about our next budget, giving them a little more money.
Didn't we do that this year?
No.
Oh.
I think the last time we were talking about it, it was nine thousand nine hundred and five hundred and thirty-four.
Oh, I did have it right. Okay.
We voted for something at the election commission, wasn't it?
Ring your bell.
For money? Hmm.
Oh.
Okay, maybe that's what it was.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I wanted to say that I, I watched Clerk Challenger this year. There were changes, up top of changes, up top of changes, that she had to navigate very quickly in changing election worker training, in changing precinct layouts, in changing where, even where our, our ballot box was, and how it was lit, and how it was on camera.
Unlabeled?
How it was labeled.
It didn't be labeled.
There, it, really, everything was changing almost daily, and I appreciate her willingness to work with all of our staff to make sure that we run fair, safe elections for this township. It really takes every single one of us and, and all of our staff working together to make this happen. And I've, I've never seen a group of people work as hard as they do, especially on election day. And I know, as, as tired as I was, everyone was running, but everyone was so proud and so excited to see people voting. And I think that's really the payoff in the end, is, is watching it happen in person.
And we pulled from almost all departments. We had Christie come over from the police department helping us. I mean, everybody just pitched in, where do you want me to help? And it really worked.
This is phenomenal work, Brenda. Thanks for leading it up. I only heard great things and excitement from people who were voting. Is it true that with proposal two passing, these three thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight voters on permanent AV list, they'll no longer get an application? They'll just get a ballot now?
That was what was in the proposal. Now we'll see what comes down from the state of Michigan and how they're gonna handle these things. There was a lot in it. We just have to see what's gonna be presented to us and what our requirements are.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I think we thought twenty twenty-three was gonna be a very light election year, and that we were gonna be able to plan and implement whatever we needed for twenty twenty-four for the next presidential election. But I think we're gonna see a lot of changes coming down from the secretary or the state's office, and hopefully MTA and the Michigan Public League will help and assist us in implementing what can lead to probably hundreds of changes.
And they have to think so much about it.
Yeah.
And to actually think about it, we've got thirteen months before we start the next election.
That's correct. That's why the budget should be bigger. You should have, that's one of the things that I thought, that even though twenty twenty-three may be slow, it's not gonna be slow. There's gonna be a lot of activity, a lot of money that's gonna be needed to go into it. By the time you get to twenty twenty-four, you know what's gonna hit the fan.
There's three elections.
So it's, it's okay.
I think it shows that the changes in twenty eighteen helped benefit at least more voters to turn out, regardless of how you feel about that, but those particular changes. We've definitely seen more turn out since then, and I would imagine with proposal two passing, we'll see even more.
I agree.
Just the nuance of that will be what you'll have to do. I, I do have to say, with the changes this year, Al and I were, were forced to watch the, the public testing as the election commission, and I'm always happy to help out. But I thought I'd, you know, like sit on my laptop while Brenda's doing her thing, but no, Brenda was like, sit here and watch what I'm doing, and I'm gonna tell you what I'm doing. And she showed us all the stuff, and Al and I, I think we, we met for an hour and a half, and we just peppered her with a million questions. I know so much more about elections now.
Which is good.
It was so helpful.
It is good.
If folks wanna know, come to the public testing, because we were the only two public there. But I learned so much, and it does show how hard it would be for anybody to mess with things, because there's so many safeguards. So thanks for the tutoring.
And I like questions. I don't mind sharing. I want people to know what's going on, so.
Good job. All right. Our advisor. That would be, this is D. Because they have a missing, this is D. Yep, hundred business, item for rejection. As you saw in your packet, there was a letter for a resignation. Mine was posted in the sixteen, or is state day. I'm not sure, I had a date set on it, but... I did talk to Melissa Eggleton, or there's a couple of them I talked to, but I did wanna talk to her, because she's the chair, because this came to me as a surprise, because she and I have talked a number of different times. And actually, that didn't come up. So it was good to get, it wasn't an accident interview. That had to be more detailed to have accident interview, which, by the way, that's something that I think all of us, including Captain Albright or any of them, we need to make sure they have accident interviews, so that we know if there is any issue, it can be taken care of. But what Melissa said was kind of interesting. Her whole life's changed, and it, it really has. She's doing different things now that she's never done before. And she said there wasn't a lot of projects coming out of Township for them to deal with, which I thought was kind of interesting, because that was a reverse of Park and Rex. They had a laundry list of things that they could do, but this apparently public art didn't have the input. So she's saying, after seven years, she had decided that it was time, maybe, that she left, because she was doing so much other things, and the pandemic had a lot to do with it, and kind of reset everybody's clock, so to speak. So that was her thought. Well, once she decided to do that, apparently others lined up and said, we're done too. So it wasn't just those who were terminated or would be terminated in December, their times would run out, December thirty-first. It was those who actually would go into the next year or so. So the whole committee quit. So I guess the thinking on my part, and what it is that you'll have to look at, is are we gonna keep it, or are we gonna dissolve it? So I want you to do some thinking on it, come up with a decision, maybe, you know, in two weeks, as to what's going on, if you want to continue to do this, or if maybe it's better that, because that was pretty much an experiment, incident. It's been seven years, and she said she's just kind of, not that she's burned out, I don't, she didn't use that term, but it was something that she's been doing right along, and everybody else has been doing. And people just, I think they held in there because of her. A lot of pressure on her part, but posing the gallery and, you know, other issues. Her husband is now part of IT, and her father. I mean, that's just a whole bunch of things that have changed for her. So that is something that hopefully you will look into. That I look forward to robust discussions, as to whether or not this is something that you feel is important to keep, or whether we should just let it go.
We don't have anybody left in that room?
No.
Have one.
Well...
Two.
Yeah, there you go.
Two newbies.
Yeah, exactly. You don't have to. So we'll see, you know, it's really gonna be up to you guys as to what you're thinking, you know, with this. So anyway, that, that was that. Any questions? Oh. Ring your bell.
Ding, ding, ding. Do you have, at the time, I believe it was Supervisor Clark, in two thousand thirteen, they created a resolution, and they created this, by resolution. Do you have that?
No.
Okay. I think we could help locate that.
Oh, I'm sure it wouldn't be an issue. It's only been seven years.
Oh, you have, okay.
Yeah, it's only been a short time.
I was gonna say, so we'll, we'll share that, and that might help, whatever the intent was when it was created, maybe we can look back at those premises and see if that still exists, or, like you said, if it's time to dissolve it.
Yeah, from what she was discussing, and Melissa's been there from day one, and what she was saying is, there's just nothing coming out for them to do. And I said, well, maybe in a couple of years, you know, if we have streetscape, or, you know, put up poles, or whatever we decide we're gonna do, they'll become involved again. But right now, so yes, that resolution, because I knew that was what it was, this is something that has to be decided. If you're gonna dissolve it, then yes, the resolution needs to be dissolved. If they're gonna keep it, then we'll just move on, and I'll assign seven people? Is that what it is? Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six people. Well, actually, they wanted nine, nine member. So anyway, that's kind of where it stands at this point. So, all right, page four, there's no items for action. So Superintendent Ford.
Thank you.
That's twenty, blessing twenty minutes.
Okay, I will be free. Treasurer Wes Foster, thank you, sir, for helping me grow in my abilities as a superintendent with every passing budget, and making sure that we always seek counsel from the experts that are around us, and that we continue to grow and do better every day. I have learned a tremendous amount from you in the last three years, but I will say probably more in the last year of our growing relationship together in, in doing what's right for this community. And it means a tremendous amount, because I know that you are a busy man, but each and every day, you make time for me, and I really appreciate that. And I think it's as better as a township, and I, I appreciate you. So I wanted to say that first and foremost. On Friday, I'm happy to report to you that we closed on the Park Lake property that will now expand our record boat launch. I can tell you that Mr. and Mrs., I should say, Doctor and Mrs. Lupta were, were very proud. They have noticed the changes in the Park Lake area, and they really felt like it was time for them to let go of that property, so that it could become more for our community. They see the families playing, they see the families that are at the beach, they see people that are at the Park Lake Creamery, and I think I, I, I don't wanna speak for them, but they seem honored to be a part of helping our community be able to grow and offer something more for our families to enjoy in that area. And I told them that they are a large part of that, because the, the land they sold us on the other side that, that expanded with Wasser Park, they just can't believe the changes since the house has been demolished, and they're excited to see what is going to come in the future. So they will continue to travel that area, and I think they feel a sense of pride in helping this community be more beautiful, and creating an area that is, is just meant for, for recreation and for families. So they were, they were very proud of that, and I can tell that that was, seemed to be a common theme we talked about at the table, across the table, as we were signing the documents. So I think they're very proud to be part of that. There was a sanitary sewer project that we undertook from our senior center out next to alongside the cemetery, out to Webster Road. There were, was old clay piping that had over the years been broken and demolished by machinery and by things traveling over it, and it was no longer adequately pushing the sanitary sewer out to the road as it should be. So we were able to go down and replace that pipe with new pipe, and it is now, with the help of our grease trap, making sure that we are capturing the grease, so it doesn't go into the sewer, sanitary sewer system. And we are getting a more effective sanitary sewer line service for that facility. So I'm very happy to report that that was done. We did some paving recently, and I'm, I'm really, what I'm doing is recapping what I think our employees, in addition to elections and tax collection and Sewerville collection, have been working on to get ready. Prior to winter, we had the paving project. You'll notice out front now, there used to be a cement island that kind of cut, a divider between the police department and us, but we were able to take that out and actually put in a, an actual handicap accessible area for people in our community. It was a little bit more awkward before. It's now been striped, so that people can use that, and I'm proud that that was done before election day, because I think that helps people with mobility issues here at this facility. We also obtained new signage in the cemetery to replace the old signage. And, and if you noticed, on your way in tonight, there is a senior center sign hanging just below the police department sign now, which is something that I think Marlene King had desired for a long time, and I'm excited to send her a picture and show her that. But making significant improvements in the paving and the signage in our cemeteries for the people that visit there. I, I look out, there isn't a time, I think, I look out and there aren't people in the cemetery visiting, well, going to the past. So I think our cemeteries are very active for people in a, in a passive way. They can enjoy the beauty, and I hope it's more accessible and easier for them to visit lost loved ones. We have lost a DPW employee who took a, a brand-new job at Ranger. We're very proud of Dallas English. He's moving on and moving up, and we're very proud of him. So we will be posting a DPW employee job, and that might have been even tomorrow morning. That posting will be open for two weeks. It is a full-time position, and, and the details will be on our website. So if anybody's looking to put in an application, they can do so electronically, or they can fill one out and bring it in here to the township. Last but not least, there was a fire department roof repair. It's hard to believe. I wasn't here when it was built brand-new. We, we still refer to that building as being a brand-new building, but it's twenty years old or more now. So we're continuing to take care of that and do the work that's needed to keep that intact and beautiful as it was intended. We're very proud of the fire department and all of the people that work there, and we wanna make sure that we make sure we take our investment. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, please.
Of course. Two weeks. Should that be three or four in order for an application for DPW?
Our standard is two weeks. If we find that we have a limited applicant pool, or there are people we receive applicants for, and it's, and if they're not qualified, we would extend that possibly in three or four weeks, but usually our standard is two weeks.
So if somebody, because two weeks doesn't seem that very long for somebody to hear that's gonna take place. Three or four might be...
Our, our standard's been two, but we'll...
I know, but that's what we always say, that if you don't have anybody that applies, maybe it's the timeframe.
But I think the last time we had a DPW posting, I think we had ten applicants. Sometimes I think it depends on the job.
Okay.
It's very difficult. This is much different than a part-time dishwasher for twelve hours at the senior center. Those are very specific hours and difficult to fill for somebody, because it's three specific hours on three specific days in the week, whereas this is a full-time job, where people tend to gravitate more towards the full-time position.
I just don't, I don't think I've ever applied for jobs in two weeks, but that's, I'm just curious as to how you're... But that's, I'm just curious as to how you're.
I appreciate that. Okay. I'll take that into consideration.
Yeah. Anyway, okay. Is there any questions? Ring your bell. There you go. Okay.
I noticed that there's a tree laying on our wire on our new property by the lake.
Okay.
And whether WOW has to take that off or our guys can.
Lakeside, the ones I just closed on?
Yep.
Okay. I'll, I will let Ben Zieb know or Director of Public Works and we can get that resolved tomorrow hopefully.
Yeah, good.
It might be a phone call. It might be a phone call. We don't know if it's electrical or.
It's the cable, WOW.
Okay.
And probably Frontier.
Okay.
They usually, the times, the last time, they didn't do anything about it and it finally broke.
Oh.
So I think if maybe Ben can look at it, get up in the bucket.
We'll try to get it resolved tomorrow or in the next few days.
Yeah.
But I'll let him know tonight.
They don't seem to care about our wires for some reason, WOW.
Hopefully we can make them care.
I hope so too.
That sounds like WOW.
Did you say I think that is enough to take care of?
Yeah.
Hey, is there another question?
Are we doing comments? So if this is worked out?
No, not yet.
I have it worked out.
Great, she did a good job. She stays. All right, publish statements. There you go.
Just forget it for her.
Stephen, it just depends on how quick you answer.
There you go.
It says, short timely answers is what I want.
Oh.
So do you, Steve, do you think that, that a 35% salary increase is significant?
I don't know who got it.
What if it was offered to Karen? Would you think that was significant? Should we offer her?
I'm not under, I'm not under the coaching.
We just want, we just want a quick answer. Okay, well, what if we created a new position? See, does, can a township have a CFO?
We do. I'm the CFO of the township.
So we're going to, how about if we say this? We're going to have some, we're going to have some new cards printed up for you. We're going to give you a 35% increase and you're going to be, you're going to be our new chief financial officer through 2028. How's that?
She wants me to work harder and I don't want to.
And I want you all to listen to this because he, earlier he stated that, he showed his hand. He said, you know, for $150,000 he could be head for financial director.
I test as a market, that's what they're getting paid.
Yes. But this is bad. Yeah, I mean, you know, we'll give you 40% and so you could go up to 120,000 and keep your seat. And so what I'm saying to all of you is that you're getting a financial director for the paltry price of less than $40,000 a year increase over this year's budget. So I think you should all seriously look at raising that man's salary and getting him a new title.
I believe in public township government and elected people. And I truly do believe in that.
Okay, we're going to put him on the ballot in 2024.
The other piece of it, I think that whoever's here, that somebody can be replaced.
Okay, I have another quick timely question that requires a timely answer. We went over the A words, okay? Approve, allocate, appropriate, okay? And this all is kind of centered around because you even alluded to that about me, about the Park Lake Trail CIP. I said, I want to initiate a C word tonight. It's called commitment. And instead of, I don't give a crap about appropriate, allocate, approve. We allocated funds. We have, I will bet you, we have over 1,200 people, residents, voting residents, that would really like to see the trail going and probably exponentially more than that. But all it would require really is for this board right here, including that person right there especially, to make a commitment to this township, to this community, to say, yeah, let's have a trail. I mean, it's, it's nothing. It's apples and elephants in regards to Pregoris, Bengal, what's the other one? Fletcher, Robson. I mean, probably none of you have ever even walked those trails. I've lived on those trails, especially Pregoris where Bengal is now and the park where the Park Lake Trail would be. And I can't tell you how much I've learned and how much my sons have learned and how much everybody else has. And it would be something that you would never imagine would be so much more benefit to this community than that. Or a museum. Anyway, thank you. I got that under three minutes too.
You did. I'm impressed.
Washington, New Jersey.
No, not yet. We have six minutes. Now, now takes the board comments.
Did I get to go first? Ryan had a very good comment. He kind of talked me off guard a little bit and I did a halfway job of explaining that as far as the 305, 498,05 negative to add to start the year up. The big thing is, you got to look at, I thought about, you got to look at the 811. Okay, in 1-1, the general fund broke. And when I, when I say that's part of the full fund bank account, what happens is they go back and they take and fund all, when they do the financial statements, that's what's happened, they did this, they go back and fund all the full fund accounts. And this is part of the full fund, general fund account. You look at the other page, second page, talks about general, about general government fund, general fund. And if you add up the amount of money you had to have in the building you're owning fund, which is part of that, 266, 680, 410. And then you put the, I like to do math easily, you put the 498333 in there, or the police training fund, and you put the drug forfeiture fund, 649718. And then you come back down there and you jump on the, all of that prevention fund, the 2423095, you put that out to 305 or three darn close right there. And that's how that works because they have to take and fill their funds because then we restrict that money restricted and that's your fund balance and that's where that is. And that money doesn't take and as you, when you get to about 115 and 130, definitely you've taken enough tax revenues, the general fund is flush again, this backup and this backup over the top. But that's how a Kearl style colony works. And I should, I should have answered that question that way. That's how that looks, what causes that. I've done this for 20 some years and I've seen this. I think, I think the first time I ever did this, I was sitting in my office and you don't get elected as a township, it was November 20th and it was December and I was got the tax rolled down and I was kind of nervous and Jack Phillips walked by and he had his office down the street. He says, you look like you're a little bit worried. I says, yeah. He says, I said, what, he said, what are you worried about? I said, well, where's all this money going to come from? It just appears and it does, it appears. And you have to collect about two month, two, two, two week periods of tax dispersment before the number starts going back. And why you do that this way is because you've taken your other money, which is not show, doesn't show up here, your investment savings money, which is not an 001 number, that's an 06, that's what investment savings, so that's on a separate deal. And you've invested that money and you don't want to pull your CDs. You want to get them started anywhere you want, all the way to the end of the year and you make a little more bank where you block on interest. But that's the answer to your 305, 498.
Thank you.
Do you want to come into his office?
No, that, that makes sense to me. Thank you.
I worried about that.
He wants to go to sleep.
You do that, we need a quarter before he even got out. Comments? We'll start with you, trustee Feegwood.
Thank you again to the chief for his years of service. It's not often that you start a job and end a job at the same place anymore in this country. And so it's, it's really an accomplishment. So I look forward to having him still around for the next six weeks and look forward to what we're going to do with the department come the future. I want to give a big thank you to the voters for showing up in such large numbers on Election Day. And again, thanks to our staff for just really knocking it out of the park. And then I just want to reiterate my deepest apologies to staff who work really, really hard here. I think using words like greedy to describe them is really unfortunate. Public employees are under attack in this country, conceptually, verbally, and often physically. And I think it's language like that that gives people, the people think, that gives them the right to do awful things to people because they're trying to defend democracy, protect the government, whatever it is they think they're doing. We can disagree on policy. We can disagree on decisions we make, but I think when we start categorizing a whole group of people as greedy, it's, it's really unfortunate. Recruitment and retention is real tough right now. I think I might be the only person who does hiring on, on the board right now. We constantly have people leaving. We're constantly trying to offer more money, more benefits, more time off. Since the pandemic hit, it's been really difficult. We used to post a position and get 80 applications and now we're lucky if we get 10 applications. And only half of them are even in the realm of being able to be taken seriously for the job. So people have just said they're not going to stick around when they're not happy, they're not going to stick around when they're not compensated well, they're going to know their worth, to Steve's point earlier. And I think that's probably good for society. It makes it more expensive for organizations like us, but I think it is, people should, should, we're not volunteering here, right? We're hiring folks. So I just want to put one more plug in for our amazing staff. When they're not doing their job, Karen's going to hold them accountable. But when they are, we need to make sure that we're protecting them from poor language. Thanks.
I'll keep it short.
That's okay.
Thank you for coming.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, we're right.
I'd like to welcome this panel member to the board of trustees. And I want to thank the election inspectors staff, the Election Commission for all your help this year. We would not have been able to make the election run smoothly and without the dedication and flexibility of everybody. So thanks.
Mine's a little longer, but as long as we're still going, we'll be a couple minutes after song.
You got six seconds.
All right. I'm, what I'm going to do is tell a little story and hopefully it'll go fast. And I'm writing it down so that I'll give Brenda a copy, she'll have it. On Tuesday, November 1st, my husband Bill experienced a terrible accident involving his left hand with a circular saw. He lost part of his index finger. He fractured the middle finger as well as losing some of the finger, but they could attach that, and a ring finger. Additionally, there were so many lacerations on his hand from that saw. I called 911 and the ambulance closest to our home responded, which happened to be the Clinton County ambulance service. So a thank you to Brian and Brian, which is who were, along with the third male, which honest to God, it just kind of went past me. Bill was transported to Sparrow, they did a really nice job with that, to his emergency center, and he subsequently was transferred to the U of L. With, to their trauma center for care. Today was our second, actually second trip to see the Ann Arbor surgeon to check and see how he was doing with it. And at this time, he seems to be healing, you know, pretty good. He gave him some exercises and things that need to be done. He's an occupational therapist. And he did mention that two fingers were fractured, which we didn't realize that they were actually fractured. So that's kind of an interesting piece. The purpose of this communication is to publicly convey our heartfelt appreciation to our Bath Fire Department. It's specifically to our fire chief, Dave Snyder, who quickly responded to our home and ensured the emergency that was adequately addressed. They wanted to make sure that everything there was okay. So that was really very much appreciated. The first responders promptly offered any and all required necessary assistance to us, which was fabulous. Even though they were beat by the Clinton County, that still didn't stop them from continuing to come and to double check and make sure everything was okay. So that was really good. Again, I wish to express our sincere thank you for promptly being there to help us when we needed it. So again, thank you to the Bath Fire Department. I had something else, but I'll talk about that at a different time when we're doing. You already spoke, so.
I'm next.
You're next because he went first.
As a chairperson, I'm going to defer my time to the new board.
I feel very welcome here. Thank you, guys. It's been interesting and a real learning experience for sure. I'm Joel Kellerman and I've been a farmer here in Bath with multiple employees, international hard sales from Germany, hundreds of horses. And I have a degree in agriculture plus many bridge of credits and medicine from M.I.S.U. Wonderful.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome, yes. I'm overly adjourned.
Second.
Are you going to make a motion?